All right, welcome everyone to the Placerville City Council meeting, February 13th, 2024. We all rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I know. Jealous, I have two hammers here.
Ooh, two fisted.
All right.
Double fisted.
Double, double fisted, all right. We have roll call?
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Here.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Here.
Mayor No?
Here.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Here.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Here.
Thank you. Number three ceremonial matters, we have none. Closed session report, we didn't meet in closed session. That will move us to adoption of the agenda. We did have one request to move up 12.7. I don't know if the council wants to entertain that. If, if so, I would look at putting it after 12.2, put it as 12.3.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda with moving item 12.7 to before, right after 12.2.
I'll second that.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Move to announcements and presentations to the public. We'll start with Councilmember Yarborough.
I have none at this time.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Uh, just wanted to say a quick thank you to Caltrans for fixing the, where we had the, the plastic containers with sand. We now have a cool like accordion style thing. So if you crash into that, you're crashing into metal now, I guess. But hopefully nobody will crash into it. But it looks a lot better. Those ugly yellow trash cans with sand are gone. So just say thank you to District 3 for doing that.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Gottberg?
I have none tonight.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
I got nothing.
Wow, you guys got nothing. Oh, I took a tour, the Marshall Hospital tour.
So did we.
We figured you'd want to talk about them.
Yeah, yeah, so that was great to see the new building and talk about some of the problems they're having with state mandates. So that'll be an interesting thing moving forward. I went to the local road accident assessment workshop, which really presented where most of the accidents we have and some safety recommendations to move forward and gave public a chance to talk about things that they knew about or wanted to see, so that was a good meeting. And I quickly attended a trip to Green meeting regarding the mosquito bridge and the 200 cement trucks coming through, and that is tentatively still scheduled for March 8th and to 9th, 9:00 PM to 9:00 AM. And they requested a two-hour wiggle room, which we agreed to. So that is all I have.
Madam Mayor, did Caltrans, is Caltrans in agreement now? Or is that still a to-do item on that, on the trip to Green?
Yeah, I, that's, that's with the county. We're letting them.
Handle that part of it.
Handle that part of it. So yeah, we'll provide input where we need to. But for the most part, we're just giving, saying whether or not they can do it and the times and stuff, so. Just, just so you know, there was a request as part of that to change that to 12 to 12, and we, we said no to that. And we set it at 9 to 9, but the potential two-hour extension could be okay, so.
Much better window, yeah.
Okay, we'll move to number seven consent calendar. Note, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion by roll call. Unless any member of the council wishes to remember, remove an item for discussion, the reading of the full text of all resolutions will be waived unless a council member requests otherwise. Do we have any questions or comments on the consent calendar? No? Okay, we will open consent calendar to public comment. Seeing none, we will bring it back and have roll call, please.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Now we'll do roll call.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you.
This takes us to item eight, public comment, non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. State law prohibits the council from acting on items not listed on the agenda, except by special action of the city council under specific circumstances. The mayor reserves the right to limit the speaker's time to three minutes. You are not allowed to make personal attacks or individual, on individuals, or make comments which are slanderous or may invade an individual's personal privacy. Would anyone like to come up? Come to the podium?
Hello, um, please forgive me if it's on the agenda. Is there a place that you guys can tell me where I can find information about the trip to Green? That's all.
Okay, we'll answer all the, all the questions at the end if we have.
Um, I have a potential concern. I own the dance studio down Broadway at 1309, and my landlord informed me just on Saturday that there is a new program. They're trying to lease the adjacent building from the dance studio at 1319. That would be for, it's called Putnam Daycare. It's the mental illness daycare for rehabilitating serious, it says in the video, people recovering from serious mental illnesses. I've spoken with one of the ladies in charge. My concern is my families, and I totally support people with mental illness, and I do believe that they need programs like this. I just do not think it will match well with our families. I have 216 families, and the littles, they're in and out of the dance studio six days a week we are there. We would be kind of sharing that parking lot. The daycare would be open until, I understand, like 5:30 in the evening. We are there morning, evenings, afternoons, and so on. I feel that if this does go through, that it is going to affect my business. I just don't know how parents would feel about that happening. And I do want to express that I have had mental issues in my family mental illness, and I understand that part of it. I also had the dance studio in Pollock Pines for 20 years, and I understand that we moved to Placerville because there was a, someone videoing the children, and the parents found out, and so I had to up and move the whole studio down here. I don't know, I kind of feel the same thing would be happening if, if this match does follow through. I'm hoping they could find a place that's better suited to their program. That's just my concern. I have reached out to them. I'm also going to reach out to the landlord of the building next to us. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? Come on up.
So a couple of days ago, I started a petition about rentable e-bikes in the town of Placerville, California. And I have about 26 signatures. And I just wanted to know if like anybody here was like, oh, that's a good or bad idea.
Can you say, tell me again, what is the petition? For them, against them?
Oh, for them.
For them.
For rental e-bikes.
Oh, for rental e-bikes. That's a great idea.
We're going to break some rules?
Okay. Yeah, go ahead.
So, so you have a, well, this is intra, you have petition.
John, can I interrupt just a second? What's your name?
My name is Wesley Stettler.
Okay, Wesley, great.
Hi there, Wesley. So you have a petition in favor of there should be rental e-bikes in town?
Yes.
Okay. If you can make a copy of your petition, leave it. And go get some more signatures. Leave it, and then we will look at it, sure.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we'll bring that back. Does staff like to make some comments?
I'll, I'll just quickly respond to Angela. If you'd like to contact me, I can fill you in on that. Are you specifically referring to what we talked about tonight or ongoing?
I'm sorry, it's been, we're talking about tonight.
Okay. We, we can talk.
Okay, a call.
Okay.
And the dance studio, is that gone to planning commission yet?
Yeah, what I, what I would recommend on the dance studio is that you make contact with Pierre Rivas, our Development Services Director. Pierre, you want to know them, let them know who you are? He can give you a card and get in contact with him, and he can let you know what avenues you may or may not have in regards to that, so.
Great, thank you. And then as Vice Mayor noted, leaving a copy of the petition, we'd love to see it. Thank you, Wesley. Okay, we will move, oh, that's oral communications to 8.2. Do we have any written communications?
No, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, items polled from the consent calendar, we don't have any. Number 10 ordinances, we don't have any. 11 public hearings, we don't have any. Discussion items, we have seven. Okay, so we will start with 12.1. Consider a presentation from Health and Human Services Agency, Public Health Division regarding the countywide tobacco use prevention program, public health issues associated with tobacco use, and information on the retail and zoning regulations of the sale of tobacco products and electronic smoking devices. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This has been an item the city's been working on for quite some time, so I'm going to give a little background and history. The police department had applied for the Department of Justice for Proposition 56 Tobacco Grant in October of 2018. In January of 2019, the department was notified that the city was awarded $395,000 for tobacco education and prevention programs in the city of Placerville. On May of 2019, the city council ratified a memorandum of understanding with the California Department of Justice for the 2019-2021 Department of Justice Proposition 56 Tobacco Grant. The council at that time also authorized an additional part-time community services officer position in the police department to assist with this program. And at that time, we created the full-time code enforcement official in the Development Services Department, and that position also assisted with the community services officer in this program. As part of the DOJ Tobacco Grant, the primary responsibility of the community services officer within the police department, with the assistance of the code enforcement official in DSD department, was to educate retailers, schools, parents, youth on the types of tobacco products, current laws regarding tobacco sales and use, including electronic smoking devices, and to educate on tobacco use prevention. In addition to educational component of the program, the Development Services Department developed a draft tobacco retail ordinance and a draft tobacco smoking ordinance with the assistance of County Public Health Division staff. So tonight, we have staff from the El Dorado County Public Health Department will present on current tobacco prevention efforts in El Dorado County and statewide. Topics will include local tobacco retail license requirements, local enforcement, including prevention of retail sales of tobacco products to youth, zoning to limit density, the number of tobacco retailers, distances to schools, and waste management regulations, such as prohibiting single-use electronic smoking devices, such as vape pens. Staff is requesting that the city council consider providing additional direction to staff, that we would return with an urgency ordinance to prohibit the establishment of any new tobacco retail shops, to allow for the completion of the tobacco retail ordinance, and to provide direction to staff to return with a resolution of intent to amend the zoning ordinance should the council desire to limit the establishment of retailers to certain numbers or density, or to limit the location of tobacco shops within a certain distance of sensitive uses, such as schools. Staff would return with the proposed zoning regulations following the adoption of a resolution of intent to amend the zoning ordinance, which we would then return at the next meeting. Staff is also further requesting direction on the completion of a draft smoking ordinance, which was also prepared using the Prop 56 Tobacco Grant funding. Staff will bring back a draft smoking ordinance to the council for consideration following completion of the tobacco retail ordinance and any zoning ordinance amendments to regulate their placement. So with that, I would like to return this item over to County Public Health staff. We have Kristin Becker, who would be presenting. She's the program manager. We have Conzie Moat, she's the program director. And with that, unless there's any questions of the council, I'm going to turn it over to the county staff to provide their presentation on the tobacco use prevention program.
Thank you, Mr. Rivas. Are there any questions from council before we begin? No? Welcome, Kristin.
Thank you, good evening. My name is Kristin Becker, and I'm a program manager in the Health and Human Services Agency, Public Health Division. And I'm here with our tobacco use program project director, Conzie Moat, who will be presenting shortly, as well as our health program specialist Penny Smart. And we are delighted to be here tonight to provide a presentation on the tobacco use prevention program. We also have Michael Ungenhauer, our deputy director in public health in the audience. I want to start off with a little background about the program. The tobacco use prevention program is funded with Prop 99 and Prop 56 funds, and our current funding term goes through June 30th, 2025. The program's priority areas include limiting tobacco-promoting influences, reducing exposure to secondhand smoke, tobacco smoke residue, tobacco waste, and other tobacco products, reducing the availability of harmful tobacco products, and promoting tobacco cessation. The focus of this evening's presentation is to provide you with a commercial tobacco industry snapshot, share with you some of our recent community engagement efforts, discuss effective tobacco use prevention strategies and how they can be applied in the city of Placerville, and update you on recent conversations we've had with El Dorado County Board of Supervisors and the South Lake Tahoe City Council. Ultimately, we want to hear from you on how we can support the city of Placerville. We are seeking city council direction this evening.
Thank you.
Before I continue, I want to clarify. When we talk about tobacco, we mean commercial tobacco and not traditional tribal use of tobacco, which is used for ceremonial purposes. We wanted to provide you a commercial tobacco industry snapshot. So in terms of marketing, commercial tobacco companies continue to spend billions of dollars each year to market their products. And when looking at their products, there are a lot of products, and that is an understatement. To put this in perspective, recently, the FDA received 26 million vape product applications. And though only 23 e-cigarettes and devices were authorized, thousands of unauthorized vapes are sold in the United States. And not only are there a lot of products, the products have evolved and continue to evolve. For instance, disposable e-cigarettes sold in the U.S. have nearly tripled in nicotine strength, making them highly addictive. They've quintupled in e-liquid capacity and dropped in price nearly 70% between 2017 and 2022. The increasing size and strength of these devices have resulted in a generation of products with nicotine levels comparable to several cartons of cigarettes, while price drops have nearly tripled the purchasing power for price-sensitive youth. In summary, e-cigarettes have become bigger, stronger, cheaper, and more accessible. And e-cigarettes and disposable products remain the most popular among our youth. So what does this all mean? When looking at the impact, cigarette smoking remains the leading cause of preventable disease, disability, and death in the United States, and teens who vape are three times more likely to become daily cigarette smokers. We wanted to provide an industry snapshot so you are aware of some of the challenges. Work is needed to protect our youth and our community. So what can we do? In our work, it's so important to engage the community. In 2022, in response to concerns about youth vaping, a town hall event was held on the impacts of vaping on our youth. At that time, data was reported from the 2022 National Youth Tobacco Survey, and it was shocking. With over 2.5 million middle and high school students reported current e-cigarette use, and nearly half of high schoolers who vape use almost daily. During the town hall, concerns were raised regarding tobacco retailer locations, and we asked the attendees, how likely is it that they would support zoning regulations? It was very encouraging that residents indicated that they were extremely likely. Since the town hall, the 2023 National Youth Tobacco Survey was released and identified a concerning trend that has emerged among middle school students, with the significant rise in the use of any tobacco products reaching 6.6% in 2023, up from 4.5 in 2022. That is an increase of over 46%. In addition to the town hall in 2022, the tobacco use prevention program team initiated a commercial tobacco campaign, public opinion survey, where we received a total of 501 El Dorado County resident responses. On this slide, we have highlighted the key findings, where residents stated that they strongly agree or somewhat agree. I'd just like to read these off real quick. So 73% stated that tobacco litter is a problem in my community. 94% said, I have a right to live in a home that is smoke-free. 76% making parks and outdoor public places smoke-free would improve the health of the community. 80%, workers are entitled to smoke-free workplaces, even if those workplaces are outside. 54%, fewer people would use tobacco products if it were harder to purchase them. 54%, I personally have been negatively impacted by smoking or tobacco use. 59%, my community has been negatively impacted by smoking, vaping, or other tobacco use. 53%, my city council or board of supervisors should take action on tobacco. And 54%, which this is a very interesting dataset, would support eliminating the sale of tobacco, so completely eliminating the sale of tobacco in their community. Again, very compelling and encouraging to see these responses from El Dorado County residents. So what can we do? As mentioned, one of our focus areas is to reduce exposure to secondhand smoke, tobacco residue, tobacco waste, and other tobacco products. The U.S. Surgeon General has declared there is no risk-free level of exposure to secondhand smoke, meaning that even small amounts of smoke have the potential to cause disease and death. It's estimated that about 25% of non-smokers and 40% of children ages 3 to 11 are still exposed to secondhand smoke. And in addition to secondhand smoke, there's thirdhand smoke, also known as tobacco smoke residue, which consists of tobacco chemicals that remain, react, and/or spread, even after smoking has stopped. In terms of what can be done, smoke-free laws are the most effective way to protect all individuals from secondhand smoke exposure. Examples include smoke-free multi-unit housing and smoke-free indoor/outdoor public spaces. And as the 2022 public opinion survey showed, showed us, that 94% respondents stated that they have the right to live in a home that is smoke-free. And what has been done? On July 30th, 2018, the Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, required all public housing authorities to have smoke-free policies. In addition, Penny Smart, our health program specialist on the tobacco use prevention program, visited several multi-unit housing in Placerville recently. Her findings include many multi-unit housing landlords and managers have voluntarily adopted smoke-free policies, including her two largest apartments in Placerville. And in talking with several multi-unit housing managers and landlords that have gone smoke-free, they would like the added support of a city ordinance to refer tenants to and use as a reference. And finally, in 2021, the Board of Supervisors unanimously approved amending the general plan to incorporate the 2021-2029 housing element, which includes promote safe and healthy homes by exploring a policy or ordinance establishing multi-unit housing as 100% smoke-free. In terms of tobacco waste, what can we do? This is a big concern of local jurisdictions. So what is tobacco waste? Tobacco waste is, e-cigarettes and vapes are classified as hazardous material, and cigarette butts are poisonous when ingested. And how big is the problem? Unfortunately, the problem is extremely big. Every year, 4.5 trillion cigarette butts are discarded worldwide. Disposable e-cigarettes, disposable e-cigarettes account for about 53% of the multi-billion-dollar U.S. vaping market, more than doubling since '22, and are the most popular among youth. U.S. teens and adults are buying roughly 12 million disposable vapes per month. And millions of tobacco product waste exists in the form of small battery-powered devices that are hazardous waste and cannot be reused, recycled, or disposed of in the trash. Another focus area of the program is limiting tobacco-promoting influences and reducing the availability of harmful tobacco products. So what can we do? In terms of limiting tobacco-promoting influences, one way you can do that is through advertising. I've included just a screenshot of the three jurisdictions in El Dorado County. So both Placerville and El Dorado County have a not-to-exceed 25% of their coverage of their windows, and that's for all businesses. And South Lake Tahoe has a not-to-exceed of 5% for all businesses. In terms of reducing the availability of harmful tobacco products, you can do that through zoning regulations and licensing. Zoning is an effective approach to regulate land use, such as restricting the number, location, and/or density of tobacco retailer outlets. And licensing is an effective approach to regulate a business. It may include zoning and other provisions, and licensing fees can help fund the program. I want to go in a little bit more detail about specific zoning provisions and licensing or retail sales provisions. So when you're looking at zoning, the city of Placerville can decide to limit the number of tobacco retailers. And you can do that by population, and you can also cap the number of retailers in the city of Placerville. You may also choose to limit proximity. You can limit proximity of tobacco retailers by residential areas, other tobacco retailers, youth-populated areas, as well as cannabis retailers. So that's zoning, those are land use regulations. But then if you're looking at retail sales provisions and regulations, you're looking more at product. So such provisions could include no free samples, no discounts, minimum pack size, minimum price. You could decide to end the sale of electronic smoking devices, and you could ultimately decide to end the sale of tobacco in the city of Placerville. So why is this important? It is estimated that if price discounts were prohibited, the number of people who would smoke would decrease. And similarly, if you included minimum price, minimum pack size, and no free samples, that would also have a significant decrease in the prevalence of cigarette use. You may also decide to end the sale of e-cigarettes or, or all of tobacco, or just focus on one-time disposable e-cigarettes. Other provisions could be tobacco-free pharmacies. So this would reduce the availability of tobacco products. Also, having pharmacies sell tobacco sends a mixed message, as pharmacies are a place where people go for wellness. I just wanted to say thank you very much for your time, and I'm going to hand over the rest of the presentation to Conzie Moat, our program director, to provide additional details on tobacco retail zoning, density, and licensing. She's also going to include a snapshot of Placerville's retailer landscape, as well as components of a tobacco retail license and recent discussions the program has had with El Dorado County and the city of South Lake Tahoe. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristin. Hello, Mayor Noe and council members, everybody. As Kristin touched upon, I'll go into a little more detail. Get that slide up. This one? Whoops, I think I did two. Back. There we go. I'll go into a little more detail about zoning elements that regulate the location where a tobacco retailer is allowed. Regulations can control density and proximity, and with capping, a city can limit the total number of allowed retail licenses. Of the 119 municipalities in 29 California counties that regulate density or proximity, the majority require a 1,000-foot separation from a youth-sensitive site. On this slide, we show the commercial use standards for Sacramento as an example. They require a 1,000-foot separation between sensitive use and same use. The definition of sensitive use varies by jurisdiction. Sacramento defines it, as shown in this slide, to include child daycare center, library, public park, church, community center, public or private school, designated school bus stop, or indoor or outdoor recreation facility primarily designed to serve persons under the age of 18. Similarly, here in Placerville, you've already defined a youth center in the chapter of the city code that regulates the commercial cannabis activity and where those location restrictions are defined. It was interesting to see, we were talking about capping, that the city also caps the total number of cannabis retailers to three. We've provided a matrix to allow you to easily compare tobacco zoning regulations in many What about what's happening right here in Placerville, where we have no tobacco retail proximity, density, or capping restrictions in place? So in all of El Dorado County, there are 145 retailers. That's one tobacco retailer for every 1,319 residents. Now, looking specifically within the city of Placerville, there are 21 tobacco retailers. Six of those are within 1,000 feet of a school, and 19 are within 1,000 feet of another tobacco retailer. And there is one retailer for every 512 residents. When we look a little closer, it's important to note the high density of tobacco retailers located in the following streets. There are 10 on Broadway alone, five on Placerville Drive, and three on Main Street. Also important to note is that of the 21 tobacco retailers in the city of Placerville, there have been nine new retailers since 2020. Proximity and density regulations can prevent further proliferation. The city of Placerville residents are disproportionately exposed to tobacco influences and availability. This is a health equity issue. Very best public health activities help many people at once. Tobacco-related policies aim to prevent future health problems in the community. And there are several notable state laws, in effect, intended to protect all of the people and especially youth. In 1994, the Stop Tobacco Access to Kids Enforcement Act, also known as the State Act, was passed, which includes requirements regulating the age of sale, signage, and self-service displays. And since 2016 in California and 2019 nationally, the law has prohibited the sale of cigarettes and other tobacco products to people under age 21, which are aptly named Tobacco 21 Law. In 2022, California voters approved Senate Bill 793 prohibiting the sale of most flavored tobacco products. And not only did this law pass in California, but 56.9% of El Dorado County residents voted for this. And those are great laws, but there's a reason local municipalities are enacting local policies. Many recognize that the state laws don't have enough direct impact in their communities. So in addition to state laws, over 226 municipalities have chosen to implement local ordinances to decrease tobacco use and improve health outcomes in their community by requiring a local tobacco retailer license or conditional use permit to sell tobacco. Those licenses can be in addition to or combined with ordinances that regulate the location of those businesses. Currently, there are no tobacco retail zoning or retail sales regulations anywhere in El Sorry, I forgot to show you that slide. So in the last couple of slides, I went into greater detail about zoning and other laws. Now I want to focus on local tobacco retail license. As a best practice, a comprehensive license will include findings and purpose sections to provide justification and intent of the ordinance, a clear definition of tobacco products that includes all current known products, and that is broad enough to include future products, license application, issuance, and annual renewal procedures, and a requirement that retailers train their employees as a condition of receiving a license, annual license fee that can be periodically adjusted and is adequate to cover administration, education, and enforcement costs, designation of a civil enforcement agency to carry out license administration and enforcement, and penalties for selling without a license. Any penalties are to be imposed on the retailer and not on the purchaser. Civil and not criminal penalty structure for violations, including graduated, monetary fines, and mandatory license suspension or revocation for repeated violations. Some common prohibitions found in a TRL: no new licenses within 1,000 feet of youth-oriented facilities, and no sale to persons under 21. The license should define the minimum compliance checks per retailer annually, for instance, two checks per retailer per year. A local license can provide reinforcement of existing laws by stating that any violation of local, state, or federal laws is a violation of the license. Additional provisions like pricing regulations and product bans, like Kristin mentioned. For example, some jurisdictions have banned electronic cigarettes or vapes. So that's an overview of the main provisions found in a TRL. And some key benefits of a local TRL include reducing tobacco initiation, monitoring sales, regulating retailer density, and aiding other tobacco control efforts, such as tobacco-free pharmacies, mail order or internet delivery regulations, and point-of-purchase restrictions. When it comes to the point of purchase, I'm not sure if you've seen these new tobacco lockers that are coming out. It allows someone to purchase something online and pick it up at like an unmarked locker that they just scan the QR code with their phone, and it lets them open it up and get whatever they ordered online. That's not banned under current state law, but it could be under a TRL. So implementation of a comprehensive tobacco retail license allows a city to establish a comprehensive retailer list and to fund enforcement without taxpayer cost and prevent illegal sales, support law enforcement through penalties, and reduce health-related costs and advance public health inequity. So we've also recently met with El Dorado County Board of Supervisors and the city of South Lake Tahoe. In El Dorado County, on December 5th, we presented to the Board of Supervisors on tobacco retail zoning and density regulations. The board unanimously approved and signed a resolution of intent to amend the zoning code to add a section titled Commercial Tobacco. The board also directed staff to return with an urgency ordinance to prohibit the approval of new tobacco retail applications pending the study of a more permanent ordinance and to provide additional information on tobacco retail licensing and zoning. On January 30th, an urgency ordinance was unanimously passed, imposing an immediate moratorium on the acceptance of any new application for a tobacco retailer in the unincorporated area of the county. And in the city of South Lake Tahoe, on December 12th, we presented effective tobacco strategies that local municipalities can implement. South Lake Tahoe expressed interest in a local TRL. And with a strong desire to curb the abundance of toxic electronic smoking devices, which are both very attractive to teens and very harmful to the environment, the city leaders there are looking into banning the sale of vape devices or single-use vape devices. El Dorado County and South Lake Tahoe both said they'd like the three municipalities to move in a similar, if not the same, direction. So we've provided an overview of tobacco prevention focus areas, and we're seeking Placerville City Council's direction, which may include tobacco retail zoning and density regulations, tobacco retail license, smoke-free multi-unit housing, and/or smoke-free indoor/outdoor public spaces. We know that was a lot. We're here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Have any questions from the council at this time?
I have a couple.
John?
Okay, hold on. You mentioned pharmacies that sell tobacco. Do we have those in town? I don't go to all the pharmacies, so I can't know that. Rite Aid? They do?
Just, I think there's just one. That would be Rite Aid. I think the other Rite Aid closed.
Yeah, okay.
A lot of pharmacies have already stopped selling.
Right. That's kind of what I thought. Okay. Okay, that's fine. I just want to know.
Oh, private ones? Yeah, right.
No. That's the one I go to, and I haven't seen any cigarettes in there. And then, okay, so the retailer side of it, yeah, we've all noticed the kind of springing up like mushrooms. But you say there are X number. I'm assuming that some of these tobacco retailers in the city are also things that sell other products like drugs.
Like?
Like, like, like the pharmacy that sells tobacco.
Oh, right, right.
And then like, I'm assuming liquor stores.
Yes, there are, there are some that sell other products, and that does include like a gas station if they are selling tobacco.
Okay, so, so, okay.
So you could define a tobacco retailer.
I'm just curious.
Include them or not include them.
I'm just curious about the, just the ones that are like, how many standalone businesses are there here in town? I haven't, I mean, I could sort of go through them in my head, but I'd probably miss something.
We have a list. We could probably, we could provide it.
That's, that's fine. Thank you. Thank you. That's it for me for now.
Any other questions? No? Okay. We'll open this up to public comment then for their questions, comments.
So if they're gonna stop the tobacco in public places, the smoking of tobacco in public places, how will that affect, like, if you're in an apartment complex and there's designated smoking areas, how will that be affected?
Thank you, Wesley. Do you want to answer now?
Yeah, we'll get all, we'll get all the questions, and then we'll answer all the questions at the end.
All right.
Do you have any other questions? Okay.
Hello, my name is Sarah Stalbus. I used to work with these amazing people at Public Health. I now have the honor of serving as a community member on their Tobacco Use Prevention Program Coalition, which you are all encouraged and welcome to join. We would love to have you there. I'm also an expecting mother, expecting my first child in June, and a saying that keeps coming to my mind is that it takes a village. I think the Tobacco Use Prevention Program is a prime example of the positive impact a community can have on children. Not only do their goals of this program impact the current population, but they also protect future generations and result in a healthier and more productive society, as well as improve economic stability. Last year, California alone spent $15.44 billion on health issues related to tobacco and vape products. That is probably a gross underestimate, really, but that is astronomical and completely preventable. So now is our time to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Again, I don't know if I'm speaking this at the right time, but it's about cigarettes. I wish that every business that, like a restaurant or a bar, that had customers go outside to smoke, I wish they were required to have an ashtray in front and then be required to maintain it. That's all.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you. First, I wanted to thank HHS and staff and Kristin and Concy for their presentation. I apologize, they're probably going to hear similar comments that I made to the county Board of Supervisors. I've been, and thank the council for listening to this presentation and asking them to put this on the agenda. I've been in education for almost 30 years, and I've worked in several counties, several cities across the state here, and been responsible for building schools in each of those counties and cities. This is the first time I've been in a county or a city that has not had an ordinance or a regulation in place. And during one of the town hall meetings that was referenced earlier in the presentation, I actually asked the audience members if they thought that we had a 1,000-foot rule for retailers such as this to schools, and everybody thought there was. They just thought it was a thing. They were all pretty shocked to hear that the city of Placerville nor the county of El Dorado had such a zoning regulation or an ordinance in place. So again, I just want to thank everybody for listening to this. I think it's important. This is a very important opportunity for the council to be able to do something that directly impacts the youth in our city as well as our county and just do good that isn't going to be controversial for any of you, because I don't envy the jobs you're in oftentimes with all of these things coming at you. I don't know who's going to complain about an ordinance or a regulation in place right now. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nora Mays. I work for El Dorado County HHSA in the Behavioral Health Division in the Substance Use Disorder Services Program. I've been providing substance use disorder prevention and intervention services for youth and families in the county for over nine years now. I also serve as the county coordinator for the Friday Night Live program, which is a statewide peer-to-peer drug and alcohol prevention and education program that empowers youth voices to reduce the harms caused by alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs in communities. One of the youth from our local program, who also sits on the California Youth Council as a youth advisory board representative for El Dorado County, she emailed earlier her comments. She wasn't able to be here tonight. She was very disappointed that she couldn't come. She gave a beautiful comment at the Board of Supervisors meeting, so hopefully you'll receive her comments as well. So I'm here this evening to provide information about the behavioral health impact of the youth access and exposure to tobacco products in the retail environment. Research has shown that nicotine is a harmful chemical to the adolescent brain, altering the brain's dopamine reward system, and affecting the development of brain circuits that control both attention and learning. Nicotine is also highly addictive, as we know, and many youth are consuming up to 90 cigarettes worth of nicotine in a single vape device, which are commonly found in vape stores throughout the city. Regular nicotine consumption in those elevated amounts leads to addiction quickly and makes cessation attempts challenging, as withdrawal symptoms are very severe. Research has shown that individuals who smoke and/or vape are more likely to consume alcohol, and youth who use tobacco products are more likely to engage in vaping THC regardless of its legality in their state. Data from the California Healthy Kids Survey for 7th, 9th, and 11th grade students in El Dorado County shows significantly higher rates of emotional distress, chronic sadness, and suicidal ideation among students who vape compared to their non-vaping peers. That same survey also shows much lower self-reports of life satisfaction and optimism among the vaping group. Although we do not have research to imply causation, it is important to be aware that our students who are vaping are in need of additional supports. We know the harms associated with youth tobacco use can be significant, but as Benjamin Franklin once said, "An ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure." An implementation of policies such as tobacco retail license and land use and zoning have shown significant success in reducing youth tobacco use and initiation. Thank you for your consideration.
Good evening, council. Kathy Lishman, Placerville. As a citizen of Placerville, I felt impelled to say, what is the word? I felt like I had to say something, because you've heard a lot of presentation, and I missed most of it, but I think, based on what the county recently did, I think it's important to take a look at those next steps and see what the city can do. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Kristin, can you? Kristin, can you answer Wesley's question? Or someone?
Mayor, I can answer Wesley's question.
Okay. Thank you, Pierre.
Maybe if you, can you say, repeat your question so that I make sure to answer it correctly? So that I make sure that I answered it correctly.
You know, it's okay. It's all right.
In like apartment complexes and housing developments where there's designated smoking areas, how will this affect that, since those are technically public places?
Most of the multi-unit housing complexes are already smoke-free. They do have different degrees of being smoke-free, so some of them do have designated areas. So it might impact.
Can't go any better when they do get up to the microphone.
Sorry. I was trying to tell him. So most of the multi-unit housing complexes in Placerville within the city limits are already smoke-free. The ones that are, are public housing should be host, smoke-free. They do have different degrees of being smoke-free just because of an equity issue. If somebody is smoking and they get a complaint, they don't necessarily want to just tell the person that they need to move out. They want to work with them to see how they can keep them in their home and, and still kind of accommodate their addiction and their smoking, but yet not impacting the rest of the residents. So what would happen is it possibly would become the whole campus would be smoke-free, but I know that the managers are oftentimes, they're just, they are very compassionate to their residents, and they want to work with them. They don't want them to, to end up, you know, having to be moved, to move out or, or leave. So is that the question? Does that answer it? So you're, are you more concerned about there not being any smoke-free areas, or what would happen to the individuals?
What would happen to the people who'd be?
Yeah, it would definitely have to be done in a very compassionate way, because we have to, we, we, we need to understand that they, they might need to have some time to be able to either quit smoking or go through a process of making the whole campus smoke-free.
Great. Thank you so much. Appreciate the time.
So. So Mayor, I'd like to piggyback on that response. I think it's important that Wesley understand that what's before the council also is direction on coming back with a tobacco retail ordinance. So the tobacco retail ordinance would be regulating the sale of the product. So we're looking at the vape shops and other establishments that would sell tobacco products, and that would be a licensing requirement. And then we're also looking at zoning regulations that would regulate the placement of retailers that sell tobacco. So in the zoning code, we would then say that, you know, you can only be so, you have to be at least 1,000 feet, say, from a school, or you could have density requirements where, as was shown in an earlier slide, we're only going to allow so many retail ordinances per population. You know, that sort of thing. So that regulates then the placement of the establishment. And then the third, which we would come back sometime later if it's the direction of the council, would be the smoking ordinance. So it's a smoking ordinance that would regulate, say, for example, on one of the slides I saw was referencing, it looked like a sign from Nevada City, where it's an historic downtown, and they don't allow smoking. So it'd be the same thing. We could, we could have a tobacco smoking ordinance that would prohibit the smoking, say, on Main Street, or as Wesley was referring to, multifamily buildings. We could regulate smoking then. There's no smoking inside of the buildings, because the smoke can permeate the walls and affect the nonsmokers in adjoining units, that sort of thing.
Thank you. Michael?
I have a, Pierre, a question. So I, I know this will be essentially prospectively when it comes to zoning, like where an establishment may or may not be able to be, but is there a way to go, I mean, as we move forward to capture some of the ones that are out there, at least in terms of licensing, so that we had a sense of what they're doing, how they're doing it, and they're being responsible retailers? I don't know if we can, you know, we can't probably, I don't know if you can force them out, even when they're already in, I know, because we do have a lot, it seems like it. But just trying to see, how do we get our arms around those that are already established?
Well, typically, you can have something in the ordinance, it's sort of like a sunset clause, where after, say, a year or six months or some specified period of time in the ordinance, that a retailer would have to come in and submit an application to obtain a license to operate. And the same thing under the zoning code. The zoning code would be a little more difficult typically. It would probably be, if they're located, say, you know, 200 feet from a school, where we want them to be 1,000 feet from the school, they would be more than likely grandfathered in. But I have seen ordinances where, after a period of time, they would have to come in and compliance. I would defer that to our city attorney as far as, you know, the length of time.
I saw you over there.
So it depends on which direction the council moves forward in. If it's a zoning code to change, then existing uses would be legal and non-conforming until they change. However, if you wish to regulate the number and require licenses, then you can condition existing sellers of tobacco to essentially, they would also be grandfathered in, but if they make any changes, enlargements to, modifications to their business, then they would have to apply for one of the available licenses.
Gotcha. That makes sense. Or, I know I saw it, I think, in the, the components on, on the sale potentially of a property too, even if it was just like-for-like, then you, yeah. Gotcha. Thank you.
Again, I would want confirmation from our city attorney, but I am aware that sometimes when you're issuing a license, that a license is to the individual, and so, you know, different from zoning that runs with the land, a license runs with the operator or the person that owns the business. If they sell the business, it's not transferable. The new owner would have to get a license and then comply with the current regulations.
Yes, that's, that is correct.
Thank you. Thank you both.
David?
They've been answering everything I've been thinking about.
Come on, you keep blowing air. We want to hear what you got.
Well, no, I just, it's a, that's a lot of responsibility. My recollection in our cannabis discussions is that if you have, cannabis was 1,200 feet, maybe?
There's a, there's a state minimum, I.
Yeah, but I think it was, yeah. I'm going to go out on a limb here, but if I recall, and Cleve, you'll remember these discussions, if you made 1,000-foot radius around all the sensitive ones, which, it was the same, like with cannabis, schools, daycare, you know, whatever the list is, it effectively eliminates the entire town, except for like, over on a corner, somewhere over by where In-N-Out Burger is, if I recall, there was like one parcel way the hell, heck and gone, out that way. So essentially, if you put in 1,000-foot radius around it, you would prohibit any new activity. Literally, it would be a prohibition against anything, because there was like, they could all, I guess they could all go to the, you know, Office Depot.
Well, they had to do a conditional use permit for cigarette routes.
Oh, the both of them, I think.
Not just shots.
Just, just the one.
Oh, just the one.
Correct, Pierre? The other one was met the conditions?
Yes.
Because we had reduced it to 500 feet, if I remember correctly.
Right. The issue there is, is if a crow flies, it was too close to the school, but when you, when you calculate it out, because there was, the terrain would prohibit somebody walking directly from the school to the cannabis dispensary.
Grapple down the hill.
In a roundabout way, it was, it was much more than 1,000 feet to get to it, and so we, we approved of the, it was a variance.
But, but if I remember correctly, we were looking at a reduced radius too. It wasn't 1,000 feet. It had gotten down to like 500 or something like that.
Right, so the default under state law is 600 feet?
That was it. That was it. So at 600 feet, obviously, for you doing math, is less than 1,000. You would effectively, I think, once again, it would, it would, I, I, don't get me wrong, I'm not trying to, you know, but I'm just, it's, it's the stuff we have to think about. So yeah, I just want to put that in everybody's head. If you were to adopt that, that one thing would pretty much prohibit any new.
Well, yeah. I mean, this has also been the problem with the sex offender.
Oh, yes, I could, yes, yes.
That's why we have a lot of.
And it's not defending any of those things, it's just saying that's, folks need to kind of put that in their, in their head when we're talking about this stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I had some thoughts along the same lines of, you know, we're six square miles and have three commercial districts, so I don't know that zoning regulations help us with the issue at hand. Obviously, for larger cities, it does, but we're so small, and there's already a very limited area that is commercial where you can have such a business. And essentially, no matter where you live in the city, you can walk or ride your bike to a business anywhere in the city.
Pretty much.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't know that for us, the zoning component makes sense. Now, licensing may make sense and limiting number of businesses, and I certainly think 21 businesses for a, you know, city our size is already an extensive number of businesses, and I don't see why we need more than that. And so I think, you know, having, you know, for grandfathering people in that already exists, which I think we should do, because I don't think we should impact businesses that made their business decisions under the rules as they existed at the time when they decided to operate. So I, so, so that's more, that's something I'm more open to, but I think just the zoning, because of our dynamics of our city and our city size and the size of our commercial zones, and all of that just makes it very complicated and difficult for us logistically and practically to do.
Yeah, I, I would agree with that. I think, you know, when I think of limiting establishments, I'm also thinking of, you know, is it 90% of what you're selling versus, you know, if you're a gas station, it might be, you know, it's like you're selling, you know, you're selling a lot of things in your, in your convenience store, or even a CVS or a Rite Aid, versus if you're just solely like a tobacco shop, which is what we are having, I think there's been a more proliferation of that than, you know, you're, it's a gas station or something else. I, I do think there's some distinct differences as well when we're talking about establishments. You know, and I also think the type, like, single-use type products, I know even, I know some cities have even banned, and this is a different thing, but, you know, like single-use, the small bottles of alcohol that they have at the, you know, as you walk out the door for, for a dollar, because that, it tends to, you know, end up in, on the street. And so, you know, I, I think if people are selling individual cigarettes or things that are probably not even legal, I doubt it is. You know, those are things I definitely want to make sure retailers are being good retailers, the ones we have today, if they're complying with all necessary state, state laws. But I, I agree, I think zoning is going to be really challenging going forward, but I do think, I mean, we're, we're saturated to, to a large degree with tobacco products, but I'd hate to do something that, you know, if you're a gas station and you're, you know, you have a little rack in the, in the back, you know, where your cash register is, that we're going to, we're going to ban that. But I do, I have a difference between, you know, a full-on smoke shop.
So what is, I guess the question for us would be, and for all Pierre and at all, what is the county doing? I mean, because, yeah, yeah, what's the county doing? Because obviously, we, now, I, on the zoning thing, because the county is obviously different than the city, I kind of, I agree, I, the zoning issue is a weird one. I could see us putting a, I'm sorry, I need to lean forward. I could see us putting a, just cap, and you could have caps on the different food groups, like standalone, gas stations. I mean, I really hope the one pharmacy doesn't, I mean, neither they go, they're, well, they may be going out of business, I don't know, which I'm not in favor of, by the way, don't get me wrong, I'm not in favor of anybody going out of business. But the different food groups, and then we put a limit on it and say, okay, from now on, yes, no, maybe, whatever the decision of the, of the group is. And then, so, but we need to find out, I think, in that regard, and you find out what the county's going to do, and then kind of work off of that.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to direct this back to staff. So have we talked to the county at all about what they're thinking about?
I'm sure the county, just talk to the county, but, yeah.
Yeah, I would defer that answer to the numerous county staff we have here, but I did listen to the board of supervisors' hearing, and they did approve an urgency ordinance to limit the establishment of any new businesses to allow for the ordinances that come.
And I think that's the next, the other part.
Yeah, I mean, I'd, I'd like to see, obviously, we're going to have our uniqueness about doing this, especially with the zoning, as Nicole pointed out, but I, yeah, I would like to see us at least be in line with the county, so we're all kind of on the same page.
Well, you don't want to be pushing, you don't want to be pushing people from one jurisdiction to the other.
Right, right, right.
Something that isn't quite the same.
Same, yeah.
And on the other hand, you know, if anything, you might want to be a little bit more strict, maybe, maybe be a little bit more strict. So, and then the emergency ordinance, which I do think we should direct staff to bring us back something ASAP, so we can at least get in front of that. Okay, now, what's the county doing?
And, and if the council is interested, I could provide some clarification maybe on licensing and zoning. I know there's questions being brought up about, like, different types of tobacco retailers, you know, you can define what a tobacco retailer is, like, if it's a significant tobacco retailer, like, let's say, a percentage of their revenue, a percentage of their floor space, and we have seen that done. You can also define what sensitive use is. So some counties or cities may just define it as public schools, you know, and then some may have a more so, just to keep that in mind when you're thinking about zoning. And then even, even tobacco-free pharmacies, that if you want to go tobacco-free pharmacies, Rite Aid could stay in business, they just can't sell tobacco. Right? Okay, so what is the county doing? It's interesting, because from my perspective, the county, South Lake Tahoe, city of Placerville, all want to do something. And it's kind of interesting to me to see, like, who's going to go first, and someone's got to go first, and I think that's pretty cool, to be the first to go. But the Eldorado count, so South Lake Tahoe's expressed interest in a tobacco retail license and potentially banning vape or single-use disposable products. The county is, seems to be very interested in land use, but because they are also really concerned about e-cigarettes and disposable, which is a product, the, the most effective way to regulate products is through a license. So we're going back to the county on March 12th, because urgency ordinance in the county are good for 45 days. So we're going back on March 12th to extend the urgency ordinance and to present and provide additional details on zoning and licensing regulations.
I have a question, because I know that this, it runs out next year, the grant, the grant funding.
This grant we've had since 1990. So I'm not worried about it running out.
What was it, two, I saw 2025?
Yeah, so that grant, we have specific objectives, but then.
But it had a consistent funding then?
Then we'll apply and then get.
Because I guess my question to you, I guess, is just the ongoing cost, staff cost to, to do this, and I guess my second question would be to our staff to, you know, do we have the capacity to oversee this in a way that makes sense? I always like, you have something on paper, but then it doesn't actually do anything, because we don't have any way to enforce it.
The, the expectation is a tobacco retail license, which does regulate a business and the person that holds that business, they would have an annual license renewal, and that license fee is supposed to fund the program.
Gotcha. I, I asked a question, and I'll ask it now officially, on the emergency ordinance thing, because we have the same thing. It's for 45 days.
But it may be extended.
How, how, how long can we be in an emergency?
Initially, for 45 days, but we're allowed to extend it for up to 10 months or even beyond that. So we do have some time. The council does have to make findings in support of it each time, and staff has to come back with studies and analysis showing why we still need time, so on and so.
I think, I think that's doable. Okay. So we don't have to figure this out today. Okay, good.
And Pierre, how do you feel, I mean, in terms of enforcement going forward on something like this?
So as I mentioned in my staff report, it was actually the Prop 56 funding that provided, where we went from a part-time, full-time code enforcement. So I think we do have capacity there, and as Kristin pointed out, we would have fees that would also defer the cost on staff and to the city.
Gotcha. I mean, Prop 56 is always a conundrum, because on one hand, it, it provides the tax dollars to sustain these programs, but the idea is to get people to stop actually smoking and not collect those taxes, but, you know, they've become a staple in the state budget as well, fight over those, those funds to be, to be put in place, but it's a whole other issue.
So.
Oh, that is a question I had, in terms of, thank you. Are, are vape, so I know, like, a pack of cigarettes, like, 10 bucks now, something like that, are vape, are, do vape products get taxed the same way, or is it different? I don't know if anyone knows, knows that. I'm just wondering if they have the same disincentive that people have put on, on cigarettes themselves for the e, the e-type stuff.
No, I'm not 100% sure. That is an effective strategy when you tax cigarettes or e-vapes, but that's just one effective strategy. It, it takes a multitude of, but I could get back to you on that.
That, yeah, I'd be interested to know, just because it seems like it has had an effect on people. effect on people smoking with the high taxes on them, but I don't know how much a, you know, like, if you buy a vape pen, is it four bucks or something? I don't know. Thank you.
Okay, do we have any more questions?
Do we want to do direction?
I think so.
I think we should direct our staff to come up with an emergency ordinance. How soon can one be cobbled together?
We can come back at your next meeting.
Next meeting.
Well, actually, if we're gonna do, I'm sorry, if we're gonna do a land use ordinance, it would have to go to the planning commission first.
He said urgency.
Oh, oh, okay.
Urgency.
I'm sorry, I'm using the wrong phrase. Urgency, not emergency, urgency. So by the next meeting, we could have an urgency to put a lid on this thing for the time. I'm sorry, I think I stabbed you.
It's okay. Still not on.
It's, it's, forget it. No. No, it's exciting. We should be excited. You know, this is a good thing. So I, I think we should direct staff to do this urgency, bring it back at our next meeting, so we can put, at least put a lid on this thing, and then apparently we can do this for another, till next year almost. And then direct them to start working with, to find out what kind of the universe of things is that makes sense for us, and then start bringing those iterations back to the council for consideration. And then if there's a, obviously, if we come up with something and we direct them to do an ordinance or anything that has to go to the planning commission.
Okay, so you're making a motion for an urgency ordinance?
An urgency ordinance.
At the next meeting?
At the next meeting. And then they'll bring other stuff back.
I'll second that. I just wanted to ask a question to Pierre. Have we given you enough direction from the conversation that we had to, to make sure that what you're bringing back to us will...
Or is he ready to pull his hair out?
So looking at the recommendation in the staff report, we did want the council to give direction to us regarding the urgency ordinance to prohibit the establishment of new retail shops. That would be, so we would then be finalizing, we already have the prepared tobacco retail ordinance. My understanding, that ordinance would not go to the planning commission, it's not a zoning item. If you were to give us direction to mod, to do any modifications to the zoning ordinance, such as distance or density or those kinds of things that we talked about, we could do that, we would come back to you with a resolution of intent to amend the zoning ordinance. And then any ordinance then that we prepare would go to the planning commission first for recommendation to the council. And then the fourth direction was to continue completion of the tobacco retail ordinance, we've been working on that for a number of years now. And then any further direction regarding completing a smoking and tobacco use ordinance. But that we could hold off, if you like, until, until our next meeting.
But we do have a draft already prepared. More detailed direction.
So we want to just move the staff?
We could do that.
So Pierre, I understand, so at the moment, zoning-wise, we're at 600 feet, basically we're just following state regulation?
That's only for tobacco.
We don't have any. So I was misunderstanding that conversation. Okay.
So I guess for me, I'm not in favor of zoning regulations, but I am in favor of licensing and other restrictions, but not the zoning component. So that's where I stand.
Okay, so if we don't have a zoning component, then we're not worried about how close they are to schools?
Yes, that's correct for me. I am not worried about that, but I do think we should have a licensing and a cap on number.
So if I can just provide a little bit of context, if the council's direction is simply right now to come back with an urgency ordinance, staff can do that. Part of that direction is there's gonna be data that needs to be presented to you, which of course gets incorporated in the findings, and based on those findings and data, you can make a decision on how, that's the whole point of doing the moratorium, is to give you some time to figure out what specifically you want to do.
Okay.
Okay, so we don't have to make those detailed decisions right now? Okay, great.
So really, all you have to do tonight is the urgency ordinance.
Yeah, so recommends.
Our brilliant lawyer read my mind, and that's exactly what I want to do.
All right, well, I will, do we need to restate anything then, or are we good with the...
A first and a second for an urgency ordinance, do we need any more detail than that? Okay. Is there any more discussion before roll call? Okay, Regina, can we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, for coming and presenting and answering all these questions, we really appreciate your time. Okay, we will move on to 12.2. Consider adoption of a resolution approving an agreement between Community Showcase Banners LLC, an affiliate company of CGI Communications Incorporated, doing business as CGI Digital and the City of Placerville. Mr. Morris.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I was thinking about this today and thought, you probably thought you were all done with banners for a while. Hopefully you have all had the opportunity to, to see our new banners that are up out on Main Street, and I've received comments that people like them, they like the, the variety that we have. Approximately eight, eight different banners that are up out there now, so hopefully you'll be able to find them all and see where they're all at. But it was interesting because the, I think it was the, like, two days before you approved the last banner design that we did back in January, I guess it was, or before that. I got contacted by this company, CGI, and we are familiar with them, we work with them. If you see on our website, the Placerville video programs that we have, where we interview and they shoot videos of, you know, council members, mayor, et cetera, and different sites in Placerville. When we, we've worked with them for quite some time on that program. And how that program works, just so you know, is they do the videos, they produce them, they shoot them, everything involved with that, set them up for us and then give them to us. It does not cost us anything. What they do is they go out to businesses and ask them to sponsor the videos online, and then their name goes up next to the video, the business name goes up next to the video, and that's how they do that. We've done that, I've been here 13 years, it was in process before I was here, so it's been here, going for quite some time, the CGI video program. So last, this, just about a month ago, they contacted me and say, hey, we also have this banner program. It was kind of interesting, like I say, because we were just in that process, we're getting the final approval for our downtown banners. And they said we, we work with about 50 cities, jurisdictions a year, and we chose Placerville to be one of those that we want to work with. So it's a similar program where they will come in and put up the banners, or they'll, they will generate, they will design, generate the banners with our approval. Then they put them, then they, we provide them a letter saying this is a program the city is working on sponsoring. They go out to businesses and solicit sponsorships. The difference in, in this one, and if you look at the pictures that's in your pack, and I, we have it up on the screen here, this shows a sample banner, and you see your logo, that's where the business's logo would be, on the bottom third of the banner. Now, I want to note also, I believe our current banners, Nick, I don't know if you remember or not, I think are 60 inches, does that sound right? Anyway, they're a little bit smaller. These are actually 72 inches, so they're a little bit bigger, about 12 inches bigger than what the current ones are that we have on Main Street. So you can just kind of think about, in the process, about how big that is, the bottom third of the banner is where the, would be the business's logo, name and logo. So the other thing, they are a little bit different. Dave, if you want to go down to the next page, I have you a sample, that's kind of hard to see, small to see, but these, this is an example in the city of Willows that does this, and they have, they have those banners currently in place. And you can see their, their full color banners on a, on a white background that says Historic Willows, welcome to Historic Willows. So this is just an example, don't say we would be like this, but example of what, the way they do their banners, they do look, their quality. I did talk to someone this last week in the city of Orland, who also does this program, and they stated that they're, they really like it, they're good, good product, the banners are good, they do everything, they don't have to do anything. So the way this works is we would go out and select the poles that we want to use, and, and then they put those up, they'll do up to 50 with, throughout the, the city, up to 50 poles. And there is a guarantee that they will do a minimum of 25. So let's say that they go out and try to get sponsorships and they, they can't get even 25, which I hope that they would, but they can't even get 25, they will still give us 25 banners. I don't know what they put on the bottom logo section if they don't have a sponsor, maybe just City of Placerville or something. But they will give us a minimum of 25, whether or not they get the full 25 sponsors. If they get more than that, then they'll do, they'll do up to 50. So I reviewed, I actually went out and one day and drove Placerville Drive and Broadway and counted light poles potentially, and it actually comes out to approximately, between the two, approximately 50 total, total poles between the two. Maybe, maybe a little bit less, depending on how we do it. So I, I think it can work. I also took this to our economic advisory committee to get their opinion on it, and they were fully in favor, they thought it would be a good program, and they did think the businesses would do that. So the cost also, Dave, if you can scroll down to the next page, I'm trying to think what it is. So this is just an example, seeing how they do it, yeah, one back, one page back, Dave. So on this page shows, this map would go up showing where the available, available poles are. And a business can go on here and say, this is where I'd like to be, whether it's in front of their business, or, you know, maybe they want to do two or three, or whatever they want to do, so it shows the availables, and that's how they will select those business, those, the poles where they want that. And now, Dave, if you want to go down to the next page, so this shows what the cost is, it's $795 to, to do the, to sponsor. They say that's for a year, but it's my understanding that these banners last more than a year, it's however long the banners last. So, but they can come back and try and renew, actually, one, you see it says on here, one year display, so it could be, that they, they, they wouldn't have to renew every year if they want to, if they want to keep that up. If you, if you go down through there, you'll see there's, there's a break, if they want to do two, three, four, five, however many banners they want to do, they can get better, better pricing, discount for doing more than one. So anyway, that's, that's basically how the program works. I will note that there is one, I'd like, I'll call it a minor issue that we're still facing, in that these, when we do the banner program downtown, we own these, these power poles. All of the ones on Broadway and Placerville Drive are PG&E owned. I, I initially contacted PG&E, and their, their first answer was, no, we can't do that. And I said, and I said, well, why not? They said, well, the PUC doesn't allow it, but then they sent me the regulation that said you cannot attach some of the power pole without approval. I said, well, this doesn't say you can't do it, it just says you need approval, and I'm asking for approval. The person I talked to from Orland this last week said that theirs are all on PG&E poles and they allow it. So I'm getting information from him that I can take back to my representative, and I'm hoping that we can, we can get this approved. That's the only thing that potentially could, could stop us from doing it if we, if we want to move forward, so. The direction I'm asking for tonight is if you're interested in this program and think it's good, is to adopt the resolution, which will approve the agreement between the city and this company to, to do the banners. It's my understanding, what they'll do is they'll ask us for themes that we would like on the banners, and probably up to like five, like you saw here. We would give them those themes, they would go back and design them for us and show us what they would look like, and we would have the opportunity to view those and say, yeah, that works or not, so. So anyway, that, that's the direction we're looking for tonight. If you want to move forward this, we can adopt this agreement and, and move forward, so.
Questions from the council?
I have a question. On the logo cleave, so, like, I know on the, the ones we have now, you know, we have the community foundation, but it's all sort of, it's all the same colors, you know, on logos, if you're doing someone else's logo, they could be, you know, take your pick, right, rainbow. So are we, is it gonna be disjointed, or are we talking about just like one single color for everything, so that there's some uniformity to how these look?
I haven't had that discussion. I'm assuming if someone has a color logo, if you look closely at the, the banners we have now, it is, actually has that little bit of a tint of green color in the community foundation's logo, so it is not just one color, their, their logo.
Multi. I guess my question though is, in this case, they're all one, because it's all the same, it's all the same logo.
No, am I wrong, Jackie?
I, I have a picture of one, and I'm looking at it, and it's all one color.
I know in the, in the, in the mock-up that they sent us, you could still see that color in it, whether or not it turned out.
Yeah, it looks just white.
The color in white, and, and I have the same concerns, that now that we've put these on Main Street and everyone loves them, that we keep some kind of consistent theme. I mean, each district has their own separate, obviously, they're not going to say historic. I think Broadway has adopted an agricultural theme some years ago, and I'm sure that they have a lot of input. So my concern is how they're gonna look, I mean, we don't want to, Broadway, they look one way, and Placerville, they look one way, and, you know, Main Street looks another way, so I'd, I'd like to see us, you know, have a flow and some consistency. And also, just looking at that, I'm, I'm looking at our Main Street banner and the logo isn't a third of the banner, so worried about how the, the wording versus the picture versus that is, is all gone.
Yeah, I think if you go back to the, Dave, if you can go back to those pictures from winters, I wish we could see those, they actually looked like they worked pretty well.
It's in the slideshow, it's in the paddles, right there.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I kind of disagree with the uniformity thing. I don't see why Broadway and Placerville Drive can't be different than Main Street, Main Street's Main Street. The other thing too is Placerville Drive and Main, there's a connection between Broadway and Main Street, pretty, you know, they flow one to another, but Placerville Drive is, I mean, literally, the freeway cuts it off from the rest of the town, and so you could have different stuff down there, and I'm not sure it would be offensive to the sensibilities of folks around, I don't know. I don't, I don't share that, I'm...
My, my comment to that, though, council, is that they've been very good to work with on the, on the video program.
Yeah.
Okay.
Basically, whatever we ask for, they say, yeah, we can do that, we, so I think they would be very, the same with this. If you wanted to say, you know, yeah, we want them all this, you know, theme or whatever, I'm sure that they would work with us.
Well, and I'm assuming, just like the other ones that came back a couple times, we have enough time to have a community input on what they look like and, and that sort of thing.
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm looking at the, the Willows one, I actually, I mean, this is just me, I mean, it's, it's all personal preference, I think, to some degree on this, but I just, I mean, it's just 50 poles, I just don't want to, I mean, I don't want it to look cluttered with like a bunch of different types of, of logos and, and, you know, pictures. Like, to me, with these, I mean, maybe when they're enlarged, I mean, I'm looking at them on the paper, but to me, with that and a logo, that would be really busy. Like, to me, I wouldn't even see it, it would just be gobbledygook. Like, I, I wouldn't even, I wouldn't, because my eye doesn't go to it. It's just like, you know, campaign signs, you, you just put your name, like, you don't need like a bunch of, because, you just, you want to just focus on one thing, like, if you're, if you're having to like, look at it, you, you've missed the point, so. So I, you don't want it too busy, I mean, that's just basic, you know, advertising and anything.
I think that's an interesting thing, though, because someone will be buying these, their, their logo's gonna be on there, it's up to them to decide whether it's too busy or not. I mean, my personal feeling about it, this is a little bit of capitalism sitting here and, and, you know.
Except that it's capitalism based on public land.
Well, no, no, I, well, actually, no, it's capitalism based on a private, not-for-profit public utilities pool.
Wow. That's, that's a PUC, so they're not quite, they're semi-private.
You know, they sell stock. Anyway, I like the idea, but maybe the public should wait.
Yeah, I was gonna say, any more comments from the council before we open it to public comment? All right, public, come one, come all.
Good evening, council, mayor. It is possibly important to consider that both of these two corridors, Broadway and Placerville Drive, are going to be changing significantly over the next couple of years, lots of construction, addition of sidewalks, bike lanes, possibly moving poles. These, these people are going to have a contract for these signs. It's possibly important to think that these signs might be inaccessible over the course of, you know, this, these construction periods. So perhaps we wait until those two corridors are done with their realignments and construction before we consider putting up signs on the poles in those two areas, so something to consider.
Thank you, Ryan.
Kathy Lishman, I never thought about what Ryan was saying, but I agree with that. First of all, I have to say, I was trying to think of the word compelled, not impelled. And just so you know, I'm going to be 80 in June, so I have an excuse to get the word wrong.
You can be president.
The 34 new banners on Main Street are lovely and classy, and really represent the community, and the logos are small and subtle. While the project being proposed is a way to get the businesses to fund the project, to me, there should be a way to have banners that truly represent the business district they are in, as well as banners that promote all businesses, not just the ones that can afford to pay $795 a year. It is not only an economic development issue, but a beautification issue too. I was at the meeting where this was proposed to the Economic Development Committee, and there was not really a lot of discussion about it, so I'm not sure how well they all understood it. Businesses pay $795 a year to have it. That money could be put to better use. The banners on Main Street cost just under $5,000, and so that money could be raised to develop something for Broadway that's unique to Broadway, and something for Placerville Drive that's unique to Placerville Drive. Plus, on the bottom of the slides, it says the company's in Rochester, New York. So they're getting all the money. And on the website for Willows, it, it had the names of the businesses that had banners. Three of the businesses had one banner. Three of the businesses had two banners, and one business had four banners. So that one business, they're paying the money, but they're, and they're advertising on four of the banners. I encourage you to rethink this, and to come up with something that's really more appropriate to Placerville, and that really ties our business districts together. While they're all unique, there could be something that ties them together. And to get the vision from the, from the businesses that are in those two locations, I'm sure that the funds could be raised to do something other than this. The Public Art Plan will hopefully soon be coming back to the city, and I, because these are, this is public art, I encourage you to wait for that. This project does sound too good to be true, because the banners are free to the city, but I would encourage you to look at other options and not approve this tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Kathy.
Hello. My concern is of aesthetic reasons, probably. I mean, I'm here to talk about the signboards later on that gets brought up, and I know that those were of concern for aesthetics in our small city.
Can we get your name, please, for the record?
Pardon me?
Can we get your name for the record?
Oh, Jenny Libitsky from Kitchen Goods.
Thank you.
Sorry. 72 inches by, what, 24 inches? That's like 12 square feet. Huge. The current signs, I don't think are, the current banners aren't that big. So those big banners are going to cover up a lot of our historic buildings, and not look very good. That's, I'm, I'm a designer, I'm all about aesthetics. You know, I think if you're going to choose between those and sandwich board signs being, thinking that they're not aesthetically pleasing for your small town, I would definitely not go with something that's 12 square feet per, instead of six square feet, which is the signboards.
Thank you.
Hi, council, Paul Godwin, Placerville. I sit on the Economic Advisory Committee, and I was present when Cleve brought up the proposal to the Advisory Committee. We didn't discuss it at length, but on the face of it, it, it sounded good, and I was enthusiastic about it. I'm not opposed to advertising in general. Part of the work I've been done, the little bit of work I've done for Economic Advisory has been business outreach visits, and I have heard basically every business that has agreed to meet with me has had concerns in general about signage. That is the first thing that's come out of their, their mouths as business owners and managers. They're all concerned with signage restrictions and trying to advertise their businesses. So I guess that I, I feel like it's, it's maybe this program is moving a little more quickly than I would have thought, and agree in general with Kathy's comments about the Public Art Plan. Part of, part of what's going on at Economic Advisory is also, a new committee was just formed at the last meeting, which I'm sitting on with Adam Anderson and Tony Wendell, to address marketing and beautification and signage in the areas of Placerville Drive and Upper Broadway. So it's definitely like a hot topic, and I think everyone wants, with the lack, maybe lack of trees and lack of hometown feel in those corridors, everyone wants something. Everyone wants to use that landscape to either advertise businesses, or somehow improve the quality of it, so it doesn't seem like a strip mall, or, you know, what we think of as unattractive for our town. So, anyway, I just think it's moving a little fast. I kind of agree, the money's not going to the town, it's going out of state. And while it might seem like a great deal, and we're getting free banners, I just think we should maybe talk it through and think it through, and maybe get some input from the businesses in those corridors. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Please.
Steve Ellenberg, local artist. I didn't come here to talk about this one, but the one thing that just stands out to me right now is that, as a local artist, I have done these banners, they're 30 by 60, and we hang them for six months of the year. And what's not been mentioned so far is images of hope and the money that we raise for them. So please consider that charity when you're considering replacing it with commercial banners. Thank you.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay, bring it back to the council for discussion.
Mayor, could I, I want to make sure to clarify, we are not proposing to do anything with the banners here on Main Street. Those would remain as they are, Images of Hope would continue to do what they are doing. This is only for Placerville Drive and Broadway. There's no plans to bring this down to Main Street. Main Street already has their banners, and we want to continue those the way they are. So just, I just want to make sure that everybody's clear on that, that I heard the mention of it would block historic buildings if they're bigger, perhaps downtown, yes, but they're, they're not downtown. They're on the full higher poles that are down, up on Broadway and on Placerville Drive, so there's a little bit difference from that perspective, so.
Just have a question, is CGI digital in the audience?
No.
Okay. Yeah, I'll, I'll open it for discussion. My, my personal thoughts are, this isn't a hurry item, we don't have to jump on this, we can, we can explore other options. That's my, my personal thought on it.
I'm, I'm fine with that too, and I'm not trying to pressure you, but I do want to mention that it may not be available again. So just, just so you know, so, but I'm, I'm fine with it. I'm not trying to pressure.
No, 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 I hear you, but I, you know, I had that, that other thought, that, I mean, they're proposing $40,000 to do both of those districts if they got every banner sponsored, whereas we did it on Main Street for 5,000, and, you know, maybe we do want to look at more economies of scale and, and talk to local businesses, and, you know, I mean, PDA used to do stuff there, you know. I just think there's, there's discussions we could have.
Yeah, I, I'd agree with the mayor, I think, I like the idea, I mean, I like the banners, I mean, I think it's a good idea. Whether or not it has to be this particular idea, I don't know. We could lose it. I wouldn't necessarily be heartbroken if we had to come up with another way of doing it. I don't want to have to make a decision because it might go away. Not for this. I mean, there are some things that it's automatic, like, okay, yeah, I don't want to lose that funding, you know, but on this one, I don't know that it's one that I, you know, I feel like I have to make a decision tonight.
I don't know that we're losing the funding, really.
Yeah, I meant that in, yeah, as an example, like, this isn't like, oh, we're going to lose Caltrans funding or something, so.
Yeah, and I've had some calls about this item, and a lot of questions about the, you know, people wanting to have input in the designs and talk about that, so, I mean, this, there could be a lot more discussion going into this. If the community wants to participate, I think we should give them that opportunity.
Yeah, I would say, I mean, I like the idea of banners on Broadway and Placerville Drive, but I'm not, you know, beholden to this opportunity or moving that forward rapidly, and I think, you know, if this falls through and it's not an option, there's probably other options or ways to work with our businesses there, you know, with the city, if they would like to pursue something like this.
I don't, I don't care.
Do I have a motion?
Then I, I'll, hearing from my colleagues, I will make a motion to table this item, pending further conversations, looking at other options. I don't know if we want to have a, well, let me take that back. Do we want to have a, I'll ask my colleagues, do we want to have something come back in a more specific way? Because my, my worry, though, is, we say no to this tonight, or table it, but does it, I mean, do we want it to come back, right?
I, I think we want banners, but, you know, it's okay if someone else steps up and says, hey, we want to help with this and run with this, you know, it's the first time we've brought it up. You know, we haven't done a whole lot of public outreach, there could be more opportunities.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to see somebody local. I mean, if we're going to do something like this, I, I think somebody local could, could come up with the same type of opportunity, and we could possibly, you know, find some sort of charity that would benefit from doing it at the same time. So, I like the idea, though.
Yeah, I, I think tabling would be a good idea.
I don't know tabling, though. Tabling means something, doesn't it?
Yeah.
I, I, it sounds like just to reject, say no to, whatever the term is, reject the, for now, and we'll let them know, and I'll, I can let them know, you know, if the opportunity's there a year from now, maybe we'll look at it again, but for now, we're, we're not interested, so.
All right, so then I will make a motion to deny the resolution to enter into this agreement with CGI Communications.
I'll second that.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Okay, does anyone need a quick break?
No.
Okay. All right.
Oh, this is the, yeah, that's right.
We are going to move to item 12.7, which is, receive a staff presentation regarding the placement of A-Board signs within the public right-of-way sidewalk, and provide staff with further direction on either to cause the abatement or regulation of the same. Mr. Rebus, you're a popular fellow tonight.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. Let me just begin by, by just stating that freestanding signs, furniture, planner boxes, and merchandise have continued to be placed on the sidewalk along Main Street, which is the primary focus of tonight's discussion, which is causing congestion and limit, and limiting pedestrian travel, and also providing for just general clutter of our pedestrian sidewalks. The focus of this discussion is the proliferation of A-Board signs and other freestanding signs that are located within the city right-of-way, the sidewalk, so we're not talking about freestanding signs anywhere else. Pursuant to our existing code, that's zoning ordinance section 10-4-17, sign regulations, A-Boards, otherwise known as sandwich signs, are expressly prohibited within the city. In recent years, there has been a substantial increase in the use of A-Board signs throughout the city, especially by businesses located along Main Street. Signs on Main Street, primarily between Broadway and Sacramento Street, are being placed within the public right-of-way, on the sidewalk, becoming a nuisance due to restrictions to movement of pedestrians. Unfortunately, the city sidewalks along Main Street Commercial Districts are very narrow as compared to other cities, which limits the travel space when they're competing with signs and other things. These restrictions were included in a, in a comprehensive sign ordinance update, as revised and adopted by the city council back in May 14th of 2002. The enforcement of the sign regulations in regards to temporary signs were, let's just say, relaxed, and that was during the Great Recession, from about 2007 to 2009, due to the constraints that the economy was having on our local businesses. And then again, during the COVID-19 pandemic of 2020 through about the end of 2021, and again, with the business closures and restrictions, we were just relaxing sign ordinances. You know, we had our outdoor dining and all the different things, because a lot of businesses were having, were really struggling with the state restrictions regarding the COVID. Staff conducted a field reconnaissance surveys to collect pictures of all A-Board signs along Main Street, and we also looked at Placerville Drive back in October of 2022, and November of 2022, July and August of 2023. And these photographs of, or pictures have been compiled and are included in Attachment 1, and we'll, and I will, I will be providing an A-Board sign presentation that'll highlight those, show those pictures. Mainly what staff is requesting this evening is, we would like direction from the city council regarding A-Board signs, and whether new regulations should be created to permit A-Board signs on our sidewalk, should the county direct staff, or should the county direct staff to enforce the current regulations, we would then begin notifying the businesses to remove the signs within some given period of time. Since these signs are located within the right-of-way without authorization, the city could physically remove them after a period of time. Should the city decide to allow them, staff would then seek further direction from the council regarding, are there any parameters in particular you would wish staff to look at with respect to the regulations of these signs if we decide to allow them? So with that, I'd like to move to our slide present, slideshow presentation. If I can work this thing. So basically, this is just citing the definition within our current sign ordinance, where it's, it's defining what an A-Board sign or sandwich board, sandwich board sign is. Staff is requesting direction from the city council regarding A-Board signs, and whether new regulations should be created to permit A-Board signs on the sidewalk. So the current ordinance, as I read earlier, there's a definition of an A-Board, which is a temporary portable sign capable of standing without support or attachment. An A-Board sign includes A-frame signs. And then there's subsection D, prohibited signs, subsection 3, A-Board signs, sandwich board signs, sidewalk menu signs, or any other freestanding temporary signs. Those are expressly prohibited in our code. This is just sort of a, sort of a flow chart showing what we hope to achieve tonight. Staff just wants direction. We've been, it's one of those situations where we've been kind of lax on the enforcement of our regulations due to economic conditions, and so, again, we get complaints from time to sign. It's very controversial, we have a lot of businesses that basically state that without these signs, it would hurt their business. And then we have, we have, again, the very narrow sidewalks, people in wheelchairs, or people that are, sort of handicapped, have trouble negotiating down the sidewalks. Those of you who have been in larger cities, sometimes you see sidewalks eight feet, 10 feet in, in width, that are much bigger, and unfortunately, Placerville wasn't afforded the wide sidewalks to accommodate a lot of uses. And we do get a lot of pedestrian traffic, where we get large numbers of people trying to navigate the signs. So either you could, you could direct us to enforce a sign, and that basically would conclude any further work for us, other than notifying the property owners of these signs, or you can direct staff to come back. We'll go through permitting considerations, so we're looking at minimum use, number of signs for businesses, number per building. We also have multi-story buildings. Are we going to just provide for the A-Board signs within the first floor? What about the upper floors that have limited sign, signability to represent their business? Also, we want to look at materials, style of the sign, and then placement of the sign within the sidewalk. So here, I'm just, we're providing some pictures. We have one of our staff showing the scale of the signs. So signs vary in size. You probably recall, there was one on Placerville Drive that was up for quite some time, that was, probably stood about eight feet in height. So some of them are very large. That one, of course, we're, again, concentrating on, on our sidewalk, so that one was not on a sidewalk, but it was within the city right-of-way. But here, we can see the signs vary in size. You have the little ones, let's see, I'll use the pointer. So on the lower, there we go, wait, wow, it doesn't, pointer doesn't work.
It's okay.
So anyways, on the lower right corner, you can see those are very small signs, and we see the standard signs there, it's the chalkboard sign. We have our staff member standing next to a sign that's a little bit larger. And then we have some where you have a sandwich board sign, and then they have maybe a curtain that says attached to them, like the, I'm not sure what that says, maybe it's a special sale or something. Number per businesses. So in this picture, we can see, we have a number of businesses that have multiple sandwich board signs. Do we want to allow, allow that? Do we want to allow that? Do we want it one per business, or many per business? You can see on the lower right-hand corner of that picture, we have, you know, two sandwich board sign, and sandwiched between the sandwich board signs is a lot of merchandise. We have, on the upper left-hand corner, we have a merchant there that is very fortunate to be on a corner lot, so that business gets a lot of square footage on signage. So you can see, there's two signs, or there's one sign on the front of the building there on top, it's got signage on the window, which is limited to 25%, and on the side there, it's got two more signs, and in addition to that, two sidewalk signs. So, you know, again, staff is looking for direction, you tell us what you think is too much. Number per building. So this could be problematic. You can see on that picture, on the very upper left, I think there are possibly seven or eight signs that run along the street, so I guess that could give a perception of a little bit of clutter, but I think, again, it's where we have multiple signs per businesses. But then we have a situation with our, some of our buildings are multi-story, and we have businesses on the upper floors. So are we going to limit the signs just to a business that has ground floor, frontage on the sidewalk, versus considerations given to the businesses on the upper floors? And then on that lower picture, on the lower left, or lower right, you can see where you have the signs staggered. So you have a freestanding sign there up against the curb, and then you have two signs up against the building, and so people kind of have to maneuver around these signs. Retail versus restaurant, it used to be that I would say 90% or more of the sandwich board signs were associated with a restaurant, and so it was sort of a menu, what's the soup du jour, what's the feature food tonight at that particular restaurant? It was a way of enticing customers to come in and try the restaurant. But now, retail businesses also use the sign, which, again, adds to a lot of signage on the Main Street. Materials and style, so we wanted to show this picture here, because you can see some, you know, not all signs are alike. There are some sandwich boards that are very, very attractive, very nice, wood signs, all of these are, look like of good materials, metal, we have not a sandwich board sign, but you can see that's more of a freestanding sign up against the curb in the upper right-hand corner. We did, for a while, see a lot of plastic signs, and that would be something where we would hope that we would discourage or not permit plastic signs. Again, this is just a picture here showing the placement, so again, we're always looking at placement to preserve the walkway for pedestrians. So do you want the signs up against the curb? Do we want it just where they're only allowed up against the building? And this is just a general sign, so these, most of these pictures, some of them are on Main Street, some aren't, but you could see the eight-foot sign that's no longer there, fortunately, up in the upper right-hand corner. We had a situation, too, where we had, this was on Fairlane, we had people that were chaining their sign to the vegetation. So those have been since removed. We have a smoke shop sign there up on the top, that's, I believe that's a plastic sign, which, you know, we're hoping that we wouldn't allow, you know, a sign of that quality. It's just basically pointing to the smoke shop, which has a very, very large sign on the face of the building, not sure why somebody wouldn't be able to see that sign on the front of the building and need that A-Board sign there, but, you know, it is what it is, extra signage. And then the very lower right-hand corner, I'm not sure, I think that's a sign that's, that we would prohibit, because I think, and I wanted to leave it for, you know, to demonstrate some of the signage now gets more creative. It's not really advertising the business as advertising a product, it's almost an off-site advertising sign, advertising Coca-Cola, rather than advertising the business. I guess it's stating that Coca-Cola is sold within that business. So hopefully, the council members have had a chance, I'm sure you've walked up and down Main Street, and you have an idea of what these signs are like, what staff is trying to accomplish, and with that, that concludes, I think that's the end of the slide presentation. So happy to answer any questions you have at this time. Staff is seeking direction.
Thank you.
So I had a question related to what is the sort of ADA compliant sidewalk width compared to what is the width of our Main Street sidewalks?
So our Main Street sidewalks vary in width quite a bit, so typically, they run about five feet, and in some cases, they're six feet or bigger, and some areas are kind of narrow, but in general, I think we're looking about six feet on average for the width of our sidewalks.
Okay.
ADA, that's American with Disabilities Act, that requires a minimum of three feet that you have to maintain. At our city ordinance currently, we require five feet. For example, if somebody comes in for a sidewalk dining permit, City Placerville wants to maintain a minimum of five feet travel way that's open and clear from obstructions. So when we look at ASHTO, and ASHTO stands for the American Association of State Highway and Transportation Officials, so they're looking at, they'd like to have, they usually say a minimum of five feet is what should be the minimum required. So I mentioned earlier about, you know, you look at the larger cities, like I looked at San Francisco, and they have widths up to, you know, 20 feet in some areas, but of course, you're looking at a large number of pedestrians inhabiting those areas, so it varies quite a bit. So I think, again, as I mentioned, Placerville is sort of unfortunate, we have very narrow streets, but we have a lot of pedestrians in our downtown Main Street, people get out of their cars and they're walking from shop to shop. So I think a minimum that we currently maintain would be five feet, even though ADA says you can go down as narrow as three.
Okay, so yeah, for like, if we allow sidewalk dining, we're requiring a five-foot minimum?
That's correct.
Okay.
It's in our code.
Okay, any other questions? No? Okay, we'll open this to public comment?
Jenny, again, from Kitchen Goods. Just based on that presentation, I have more questions and comments, but I did write something, because I'm not good at ad-libbing. But first, I'm just going to say that I use a tape measure every day, I do kitchen design, I measure all the time. Sidewalks in Placerville are mostly six feet, and in some places, eight feet. They're wide, this is six feet, I'm six feet tall, from fingertip to fingertip is six feet. In many places, our sidewalks are wider than that. So, and I take, I take, it pains me that when people were taking those pictures, that they moved our signs. My signs never look like those pictures. Somebody took that sign and moved our sign. They did, and we always very strategically place it so that the bench that we have to have in front of our place, because it's the city-owned, I don't mind it, even though bums take their baths on it in front of my store, but we place our signs strategically so that we still have six feet. I stood in front of my sign today, from the bench, from the bench, not even the wall, but from the bench to my sign was six feet. And in that picture, it was never like that, and my manager saw that sign get moved that day, and she was with a customer, and she went out and moved it back to where it normally is. And I know that some of those other pictures are not the way they normally are on a daily basis. So, having said that, I just feel like there's like somebody that's against us merchants in town trying to make a living. So, I was homesick a couple of weeks ago, and when I saw this on the board, I did a lot of research, I had time to do research, from towns across California and the country. And a lot of, it always came back to, they were either banned, and then they came back because merchants found that they couldn't survive without them, or some of the research found that city councils were trying to ban them for various reasons. So I put together something, I'm just going to read it, and then. "Main Street, Placerville should embrace the use of sandwich board signs, as they play a crucial role in promoting our small businesses. Allowing us to keep these sandwich boards is beneficial as they serve as valuable tools for attracting attention in a competitive market. These signs offer a cost-effective and versatile advertising solution, allowing our businesses to showcase daily specials, promotions, and unique offerings, helping us connect with potential customers. Preserving this traditional form of signage contributes to the charm and character of our small town, creating a sense of local identity that supports economic resilience on Main Street. In advocating for the use of sidewalk signs, we can strike a balance between promoting the visibility and survival of our small businesses, and maintaining a pedestrian-friendly environment. By implementing a simple, low-cost permit system, we can ensure that signs adhere to size restrictions, placement, and aesthetic standards, and in the process, provide an agreeable compromise between city regulations and the merchants' needs. Regular inspections and community engagement can further refine these regulations, fostering a cooperative environment where businesses thrive without compromising public safety." Part of my research also didn't show any significant public safety issues, or lawsuits brought by somebody, by people that were tripping, or, you know, getting knocked over or falling from these signs, from these A-Board signs. I couldn't find any examples of that. And a lot of small towns across America, and even in California, have sidewalks the same size as ours.
Thank you, Jenny.
Sue Rodman, Placerville resident. And as a pedestrian on Main Street, I find the sandwich boards an obstruction. And there are some that aren't so bad, but there are others, and especially when they decide, okay, got a sign here, and a sign here, and a sign there, and you're trying to walk down the sidewalk, and I don't walk as well as I used to, and so they are a problem for me. And I think that a lot of them could go away. There may be a few that could be done tastefully, and where they're actually necessary for the business, but I would say that might be 10% or 15% of the ones that are there. And the rest of them are mostly an obstruction and a hazard. And if there's more than one person trying to walk down the sidewalk at the same time, especially if they're in opposite directions on the same side of the street, you're moving over and getting out of somebody else's way, and then making your way around the sidewalk, around the sandwich board sign, and then moving back to get out of somebody else's way. And people tend to walk in groups in Placerville. I've noticed that if you have three or four people all going to lunch at the same time, they kind of congregate together to walk down the sidewalk. Well, at that point, there's not much room for some single person like me to avoid the sandwich boards and the people. I really have a problem with these sandwich boards, and I think the majority of them are unnecessary, and the majority of them are ugly, and the majority of them just present a lot of clutter, and I don't think that makes Placerville look as nice as it could at all.
Thank you, Sue.
I'm Angie from Pop Art, I didn't write anything down, anyway. Where do I begin? Out of the last 35 years, I've been self-employed for 30 years. Advertising is the most important component of my business. I don't get a paycheck, like you guys, I rely on people walking by my shop, they have, you know, I think it's something like the one-second rule, where you have one second to draw somebody's attention to what you have in there going, and the way that stores are, the way my store is now, most people would just walk by if I didn't advertise the few things that I have in there that I specialize in. For example, tonight, a guy picked up one of his frames jobs, and I said, yeah, I got to go early, because I got to go to this meeting, and they're talking about, you know, because he lives in Placerville, and he says, whoa, you tell them that it adds to the charm, and it adds to, you know, it's nice, and it's, you know, small-town feeling, and by the way, I spent $500, and I would have never come in here if I didn't see your sign outside of what you did. So tell them that, so there you go. Anyway, I wish I wrote down stuff, but I just didn't have a chance to. It's really important that we have a chance for people to see what we have inside, you know, it's just, it's, advertising is so expensive. In all the time I've been in business, I've hardly done any advertising, because it's cost prohibitive. The A-Board signs are, just cost the amount, you know, the original purchase. And anyway, so, fast forward to, I wish that, so I can sleep at night, so I'm not breaking the rules, because I am knowingly, I know I'm not supposed to put that sign out there. I wish that we did have an ordinance, a sign ordinance for A-Boards, you know, with the materials, the distance that, you know, they're up against the building, all the things that were mentioned about all the rules, I wish that we had that, so that we know that we're doing the right thing, instead of knowing we're doing the wrong thing. And I have so much to say about this, and it's just not going to, you know, work in 30 more seconds, the clock's just looking at me going. Okay, I'm done, whatever, it's just really important, it's really, really important component to my success in being in business, and like I said, I don't get a paycheck, and taking away my signs, my little A-Board sign, brings me in so much business, that will hurt my business, and that's all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you, Angie. I'm sorry, everybody gets one turn.
Steve Ellenberg from Thomas Kinkade Gallery, and I just want to say that I support putting the rules in place. I see the pictures, there's some clutter out there for sure, but I can tell you, without a doubt, that sign stops people and says, whoa, Thomas Kinkade was here? And I get to talk, I get to talk to these people, and they come in, because Thomas Kinkade and Placerville are synonymous, you mean, maybe I'm a salesman, but the point being is that I do see people stop at it, they look at it, and they go, oh, I'm going to come inside, and I get a chance to tell them, like, right now, I have original Thomas Kinkades in the gallery. I don't really have a way to tell anybody that, except, you know, I can do it on Facebook, but we all know that Facebook is wonderful for advertising, but those A-Boards actually do stop, people stop and look at them, I have nine feet, whatever you're measuring, I have nine feet between my sign and the actual, into the sidewalk, so there are parts of Placerville that have signs that work. So what I would just recommend, or advise, or agree to, is just make some rules, and we'll follow them. And they should be in a good space, they should be ADA compliant, they should be pretty, and I don't necessarily like the plastic ones either, so give us some rules, and we'll live by them, okay?
Great, thank you, Steve.
Thanks.
Hello again, Kathy Lishman, I have a slightly different opinion. I agree more with Sue. You are put in a bad spot, and I'm someone who has been concerned that we've had an ordinance, which to me is a law, and the city just chooses not to enforce it. So it's gone on for years, the first people said, just put it out there, don't ask for permission, ask for forgiveness, then it's contagious, and it grows, and it grows, and it grows, and now it's a real problem. A letter could have been sent to the businesses when they get their business license, giving them the rules to the sign ordinance, because them the rules to the sign ordinance, because maybe some people didn't know they were violating it, but other people knew that they were. Now we have a huge problem. People walk slowly down Main Street. Many of the businesses have glass windows. People walk slowly and they look in the businesses, and they can see things. And like I said, the stores, a lot of them have a lot of windows. A-Boards are cute, but our sidewalks are narrow. Garbage cans, light posts, pedestrians, dogs, baby carriages. If you're walking down the street with a group of people, often you have to walk in single file, which doesn't seem right. I don't know how you would limit, say, well, every other building can have an A-Board. I don't know how you, you know, good luck, because it's a problem. I was actually on the sign ordinance committee the last time it was adopted, and it was a good variety of people from all different areas of town and walks of life that created the sign ordinance, not just the people that have the signs. But what do we want for our community? A-Boards are prohibited in Nevada City and Grass Valley. So it's really an obstacle course. It's a safety issue. And they are in the public right-of-way. They're cluttering up the sidewalk, and some, the street restaurants came to an end. I'm not telling you what to do because I know that you're going to probably do whatever you think is right, but I just want to give you another perspective. Like I said, some of them are really cute, but when you allow them, you're going to have way more. So good luck with this.
Thank you, Kathy. Come on, some more of you came down. Come on up. All right, seeing no one else, we'll bring this back to the council. Anybody want to kick this off?
Sure, why not? All, I mean, my, my personal opinion on this is, I, you know, looking at the, thank you, Pierre, because it's a really good report. I mean, there is a lot of signs out there. There's a lot, there's a lot of moving parts going on, not just on Main Street, but around, you know, all throughout Placerville. And it has been a little bit of, it's not whack-a-mole, it's sort of the opposite way. I think I agree with a couple of the comments is, they've grown over time because, well, if you have it, then I got to have it. Like, I'm losing out as a business if all my neighbors or like businesses are putting something out, I'm at a deficit if I don't have it. So we've seen a proliferation of these over the last 10 years, you know, where I don't think we had as many. I know for a fact 10 years ago, we didn't have as many of these sandwich boards throughout. There were some, but not, not to the extent that they are today. I, I'd like to find a way to, like, small, little one. I mean, if you, I saw one, it's in their, in their doorway. Like, they have a, you know, there's a certain amount of space before you enter into the building. It wasn't, it wasn't on the, it might still be considered publicly, I don't know, but it was not on the sidewalk per se. I don't have a problem with that. I'd like to be able to get to a point where we can do something small, uniform, that we would have. But I do agree, like, if you have multiple businesses in the same building, like, how does that work? You're still going to have like seven, you know, seven signs, so maybe it's not workable. But I'd like to be able to see something happen, but we can't have what we have today.
So kind of similarly, you know, my concerns are access, obviously, so I think we want to maintain that five feet that we require for, you know, if you want to put a table on the sidewalk for your restaurant or anything like that, we already have that there. So I think sticking with that in terms of not being able to have a sign that limits the sidewalk space to less than five feet, and we can do more research on what that would mean for sign sizes, but, you know, having a small sign, a uniform size would be nice. And then placement consistent, so you don't have one on the curb and one up against the building, because that creates this sort of, you know, pathway for people in wheelchairs and strollers and stuff. It's, you know, quite challenging to navigate going back and forth. But I am willing to, like, have small signs with specific placement. I think we do need to limit maybe per building. And if you have multiple businesses in a building, you guys have to get together and decide how you're going to, you know, whether you're going to put multiple businesses on that sign, or only one business gets a sign, or how you want to resolve that amongst yourselves. But I don't think we can have what we have today. I think it's just creating an issue for pedestrian traffic. I'm done.
I have a couple of questions. Pierre, the sign that's for the yoga thing downtown, now that's kind of tucked into the front of their building there, so it's kind of under the, you know, the side. It, it's not on the sidewalk, maybe. Are those legal? Or can you not have anything, whether it's on public property or even, like, these are on private property? What is the current rule?
Current rules is A-Boards or freestanding signs are not permitted in the city limits, so.
Anywhere?
Anywhere. But again, we're, so that sign wouldn't be covered under this proposed ordinance if we're going to come back and regulate A-Boards signs on the public right-of-way. If it's outside of the public right-of-way, we're, we're not looking at those. Those are prohibited.
Well, now you would, though. They would be prohibited presently.
It's currently prohibited.
Okay, okay, okay. But, but if we came up with a ordinance that spoke specifically about the sidewalk presence, then these would be fine?
We would have to write that into the.
Okay, all right. I'm just curious.
Yes, we could certainly do that.
All right. There was another one I saw that I had a question about. But, oh, there was one that was kind of intriguing because it's this one here. At the, at the Ivy House, that, that little office building where Blue Ribbon, I think, used to be.
Yes.
And now Coldwell Bankers in there? I thought I saw that when I drove by.
That's correct.
Now, these people have a, a sign that they could, now, maybe, has this changed? Do they still put these out? When was this picture taken, about?
Gosh, I don't, I don't know. They may still be there.
Okay, because it seems to me that in this circumstance, and that's not on the sidewalk either, that's in that gravel, although there's, the ownership of the gravel is a little dicey. That might actually be part of the parking lot, because I put a campaign sign there once and got, and got whacked pretty good. But in this case, these people should have their sign on their, on their, on their monument sign there, and then they don't need these things.
Yeah, they have a large monument sign, so.
And presumably they have, because they've also got a sign now on the front.
Yeah, those are extremely small signs that you.
Yeah, oh, yeah, these are, these are real estate signs.
They would be, they're, they're not, they're prohibited. Those are temporary signs, they're not permitted.
Okay, 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 all right. You know, having been accused of trying to destroy Main Street and all of its parts on more than one occasion, I'm not sure I want this to be another one of those. I understand Kathy Lishman's perspective on this. I think there's so many signs on Main Street, I don't even look at them anymore, but then I already know what's in the buildings, and so I don't, you know, I, nothing in those signs gets me. I think, and maybe one thing I would suggest is a way forward for us, because we keep hearing, just give us an ordinance, just give us something and we'll comply. Well, there actually is one, and no one complies with it, but I understand that. So let's think of something else. So let's think of something else. Can we provide minimalist sort of guidelines? Like, I personally, these are mine. It should be some width of sign, we could decide, some width, some height, up against the building. Get them off of the edges of the sidewalks, get them out of the ball bouts, but, okay. And then, and then I want the merchants on Main Street to come back with something that's palatable to them. Because if we try to figure this out, we'll just have more and more people out there yelling at us about this. What's palatable to them? With some guidelines. I know, Kathy, you're shaking your head, but I don't want to die on this hill. I personally don't care. This is one of those things where there is no good answer. So I think we toss it back to the folks whose belong, these signs belong to, and say, come back with something, and go through a process, maybe they can work with Peak, maybe, I don't know. Parent Planning Commission, I don't know. That's how I feel.
I got a question, just out of curiosity. Pierre, when's the last time somebody was cited for an A-Board sign? Do we know? 2002?
I think the last time that staff was citing A-Boards or freestanding signs was in front of Creekside Place.
And that was about when?
There was a number of times where clearly the signs were blocking the sidewalk, because we had too many signs bunched together that were placed staggered, some were.
Do we have a date?
Some were against the building, and so the pedestrians had to.
Yeah, okay. So do we have a date? Do we have a month, a year?
Probably not on the spot.
Maybe last year.
Okay, all right.
Or recently.
Okay, so I'm just, leading to another question, this is probably going to be more directed at Mona than anything else. So with us not enforcing something like this, are we setting any sort of legal precedent by not enforcing an ordinance?
The city has the right, but not the obligation, to enforce its ordinance based on resources, with the caveat that we are not making our decisions arbitrarily or capriciously. So we're not, you know, targeting a specific business because of, we don't like them, for example.
Okay, so one more question. One more question. So with this current A-Board ordinance that we have, okay, realtors are notorious A-Board sign users for pointing to open houses. Does that fall under the ordinance also?
Yes, it does.
Okay, cool. Melissa?
I did want to point out that the engineering department has asked some people to move signs because they were located in the city right-of-way, and they were blocking site distance at intersections as well. So that's also been an issue, too.
Yeah, no, I got in trouble with that during campaign season, so, yeah, I know that, I know that ordinance. So anyway, that was a different, yeah, right. So, okay, so that helps with a couple of things. I agree with John, we definitely, you know, I don't want to die on this hill either, but I also agree with the merchants. I mean, marketing is tough, it's hard, you know, and one of the things that, and it's been proven in many different ways, that those A-Board signs, they do give that one to two seconds for that person who is not local. I mean, we all know exactly what's in the stores. We walk downtown Main Street.
I would stipulate that.
But that gives our tourists the, oh, hey, wait a minute, that looks great, let's walk in, and hopefully, you know, that brings up our tax revenue, helps with the businesses and that kind of stuff. So I'm, I'm definitely a little more agreement on getting some size, style, placement.
Yeah.
Set up. And distance for definitely some ADA. I do, you know, like I said, it is 36 inches, and I see where the five feet comes in, because that gives you the to and from. I think five feet, because of our city, five feet might be a little much. I think I would probably try and take that down to four, because people can be kind enough to step aside and let somebody pass if they need to, hopefully. Anyway, so.
Yes.
That's kind of my position on it.
Although apparently Nevada City and Grass Valley can have very thriving historic downtowns with businesses, and they don't, just apparently don't have these things.
Yeah, I mean, I, I agree with everybody, what everyone's saying. Perfect, the way it always should be, right?
You can't say everyone, I haven't said anything yet.
That's true, that is true, that is true, Mayor, that's a good point. The only thing I would say is, you know, I'm looking at some of the examples, you know, some of the more egregious examples of things are acting not on Main Street. They're in, you know, Placerville Drive and Broadway. So if we were going to kick this back, if you will, to our, our businesses, I think we got to go beyond Main Street. I mean, I want to make sure we have those by him, but some of the biggest offenders, it looks like, on this are actually not on. I mean, because you're sort of limited on Main Street to some degree, because, I mean, if you put an eight-foot-tall, you know, sandwich board, you're going to, you know, Pierre's going to come talk to you right away. But if you're on Broadway, I mean, you can put up something pretty big, and.
Well, not really, no, because the sidewalks up on Broadway.
Oh, not Broadway, I'm thinking of Placerville Drive.
Placerville Drive, yeah, 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 nobody cares. But on Broadway, those sidewalks are narrow. Neither standing you sidewalks, you couldn't do any of those.
Agreed.
There's no way. The sidewalks are five feet.
It'd be within the, the shopping center.
The shopping center would then, you could move them to private property, but then, you know, you're dealing with, you know, then the property owner has to, blah, 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 blah.
Yeah.
Once it goes under private property, though, that's a whole different thing.
Yeah, Mayor, if I may, just for some clarification on what I'm hearing, basically, we're asking the council to give us direction regarding A-Boards within the public right-of-way. On the sidewalks, we're not talking about private property or other places. We have a lot of issue with filling stations and vape shops and everything sticking out A-Boards, but it's on, in the parking lot, or it's, it's off on private.
Those would be illegal regardless.
Those aren't allowed regardless, and I don't want us to, you know, dive into that. I want to really stay focused on the public right-of-way.
So I do, I'm sorry, I have another question then. So for example, the smoke shop sign that is below the smoke shop sign, that's up there by the, the, oh.
Old Rite Aid, the other.
Yeah, the old Rite Aid, the pizza place, Papa Murphy's. But that's private property, right? That's the shopping center. That isn't, yeah.
Sorry, again, I'm not, my apologies, I debated whether I wanted to have that last slide, because it was showing signs that were outside of the scope of what I wanted.
No, that's okay, though, but I think it's important for the folks.
The main reason that I pointed out with that is that, that's a very inexpensive, cheap, plastic sign, and we used to see a lot more of those. There were a lot of those that were being placed within our ball bouts on Main Street. So I just want to point out, that was an example of style and materials. Do we want plastic signs? Because if you direct us to come back with regulations, we're not going to permit plastic signs unless the council wants them.
Okay, I have one more observation and then a question for staff. I think the voted-best dentist sign, that one grew roots after a while. That thing was out there for a long time.
Yes, we, we took enforcement action.
Yeah, that one was out there forever. Did you move any signs when you took these pictures?
Absolutely not.
Thank you. That's it. You don't need to defend yourself, I just asked a question.
Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Okay, any other comments from council?
No, I, well, yeah, I think, based on what Pierre said, and it's a good clarification, I do think some of the, and they're even on here, like this Taqueria one, I mean, I guess that is in, maybe in the public right-of-way, I'm not even sure there, but I do think some of those are just inherently, they're, they're going to be out of compliance based on other parts of our ordinances. So I would be fine with limiting this to probably our Main Street.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, that's what the agenda item is for tonight, so that's what we are limited to. I just want to point out, this is the public right-of-way, so I do think we need input from the businesses, but I think we also need to keep in mind that it's, it's for the public also, so it's not an all or nothing, and it needs to find the balance between both of them. If you've ever tried to push a wheelchair up and down Main Street like I have, these can be very difficult, and, and we want to not have an obstacle course. It's hard enough.
Well, and the idea that they're universally loved by everybody in this town is just not true. I know plenty of people that think they're an eyesore. No better way to put it. They think they're an eyesore, they think they clutter up Main Street, they don't think it's a benefit to anything.
It's my turn.
I am. I've been letting you talk, but I.
Clarification, though, this is just for Main Street?
Yes.
Well, no, this.
No, this is for the whole city, right?
Any city, public right-of-way sidewalk.
Public right-of-way.
Yeah, they're not allowed in the, in the street. We regulate private property differently for the sign ordinance, so this is only where we're going to allow A-Board signs or freestanding signs within the public wide, public right-of-way.
Right, we're not dealing with private property or those sorts of things, yeah. So, you know, I look, go up and down, and sure, you know, we all go to other places, so we all, all know the signs that we look at. And I will say that the ones that have menus or tell you something different than's on the building, they catch my attention, the, you know, the colorful signs. No, I'm not in favor of those plastic signs or the white signs. I don't even like the ones that just show the logo, that we already saw your logo on the building. Putting a logo in front of there is, does look like more clutter, but there certainly is effective advertising and there's classy advertising. You know, I, I agree, up against the building, not out in the sidewalk, we need to leave as much as possible for the public. You know, I, I have this worry about the proliferation, you know, and, and I think the hardest part of this is how many, where can they go, that sort of thing. You know, when you think about the multiple businesses in one building, you know, I, maybe, you know, they do need to work together. Maybe they have different days that each one can put out their business sign, or, you know, share the sign or whatever, but we have to come up with a standard, and they'll have to get creative with that. But I am in favor of a modest ordinance. We allow something, and I know that's not an easy thing to say, right? Because when you look at that and you have a zillion signs down the board, it's not effective. It's not effective advertising when all I'm doing is dodging it, and I don't really have time to see it. So, yeah, I am in favor, in favor of something sensible, whatever that means. But I, I think, I think everybody said a lot of things that kind of give staff, do you feel like you have the direction you need?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay.
So just to, I think summarize what I think the consensus is right now, is that, um, the council would like an amendment to the signed ordinance where A- Sandwich Board A-Frame signs are regulated and not prohibited on the public right-of-way, but we draft time, place, manner restrictions that provide sufficient access on the sidewalks while allowing onsite advertisement of whatever commercial activity is occurring.
Thank you, Mona.
I will make a motion based on what our city attorney just said.
I'll, I'll second that. And I also, but a question, but we can add things, right? We're just starting this journey. This is a journey of discovery.
Of course, yes.
We're just starting it. Okay, great. I'll second that, then.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye.
Okay, now we'll take a 10-minute break. Thanks, everybody, for coming. Appreciate your input.
You did a great job.
Okay, take your seats, everyone. We're going to bring our meeting back to order so we can finish our other four items.
He has stuck it out. He needs to go home.
Okay, we're going to move to 12.3. Consider approving a $105,000 budget appropriation from the Measure L Fund Construction Reserve and a construction contract with Doug Veerkamp and General Engineering in the amount of $64,500 for B Street Storm Drain Repair Project. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you, Mayor No and City Council. Um, the item before you this evening will allow staff to proceed with an emergency construction contract with Doug Veerkamp, General Engineering, to repair a sinkhole that formed in B Street. On January 24th, staff was notified of a sinkhole in the middle of B Street on the eastern end near State Route 49. The sinkhole was determined to be caused by a failed storm drain pipe almost directly in between two drainage inlets. Public Works staff investigated the storm drain and sinkhole and determined that the repair was beyond available city resources. After that, we consulted with a local contractor to assist with the emergency repair. Originally, staff hoped to, um, replace the storm drain in its original alignment. However, in true Placerville nature, it was determined that a sewer main runs almost directly parallel to and above the storm drain pipe, making it very challenging to replace the storm drain underneath. After many site distance, or site visits with Public Works staff and the contractor, staff is recommending the approval of a contract with Doug Veerkamp to construct a new alignment um, out of the way of the sewer line and slowly backfill the existing failed pipe and repave the trench. There are still some uncertainties in the extent of the damage and repair, and staff is proposing to-bid alternates that would not be authorized until further investigation during construction. Alternate A includes repairing a water leak if one is found at the sinkhole, and alternate B includes the repair of the sinkhole itself once the ground is opened and we can determine what level of stabilization needs to occur. Currently, the ground is very wet, and we have some speculation there may be a water leak, but we're not entirely sure yet. On February 4th, um, the Measure H and L Committee recommended $105,000 budget appropriation from the Measure L Construction Reserve, and staff is recommending City Council approve the committee's recommendation. Um, it is also worth noting that the, this investigation of the sinkhole brought to light that some additional maintenance work is probably needed on B Street in the very near future. Um, as a separate, a separate CIP project was developed as part of the 2223 Capital Improvement Project Budget, and staff intends to prioritize that project to begin further utility investigations in this corridor in advance of paving. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from council? Michael?
Uh, thank you, and thank you for the, the comments at the end, because that was exactly my, you know, where I wanted to go with it. Because just economy is a scale, and knowing, I mean, I drive that one quite a bit. It's right next to my house. Um, it's a really bad street. And I know, I mean, like, the other streets are, you know, are going to take a long time for us to get there and pay for it. I thought if we could try to prioritize that one, because we get so much traffic through there for people going to the high school, people going to Sequoia, people going to the cemetery. Um, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of folks traveling there, and it's, it's in terrible shape. Um, so I guess my question, I have, I did have one question, and that is, if we discover, you know, as we open it up, and it's much more extensive, the, the repairs that are needed, do we, um, we'll have, obviously, you'll have to do what's needed to fix any leaks, things like that, but does that, at that point, become, like, do we bump that up in terms of, do we have to go 100 feet or something? Or do we just try to fix that little part and then, because I don't, what I hate is you have to dig it up again uh, to fix the rest of it. So I guess that's my question.
Yeah. Um, basically, at this point, we have investigated enough to be pretty confident that we can fix what's in that area. Um, as far as the water line itself, um, if there's further investigation, it's probably a slow leak that's happening. It'll probably be something that we look at further as a future project.
Gotcha. Okay, great. Thank you.
Other questions? Okay, well, please?
Just quickly, before we move on, we did hand out a revised resolution for you tonight that makes some findings that are required for this emergency item, and I also want to note that this requires a four-fifths vote when you get to that because of the emergency status of it. So just for your information.
Okay, thank you very much. Open this to public comment?
Sue Rodman, Measure H, Measure L Committee, and we did look at this on the, on our last meeting. And as, as Melissa said, true, in true Placerville form, when you get into it, you find out you've got a storm drain, you've got a sewer line, you've got a water line, and they're all in this same conjunction. And which one is leaking, and which one has no bottom left? And which one is causing major, the majority of the problem? I think we'll know fairly soon, but whatever it is, we do need to fix it. And most of the projects that we run into like this in Placerville, we end up finding out that it is more complicated than we thought. And that is why Measure H and L Committee has continued to push, push that we have a construction reserve and that we have a reserve funds for when we run into problems like this. Storm drains can be a real problem, and this one is another one. We've had some others that have failed recently, too. So I think definitely we need at least $105,000 budget appropriation for it. And it may turn out to be one of those ones that sprouts, sprouts legs and runs. I hope not. But I've seen some others that I thought were going to be easy, and they have turned out not to be easy. So I think we need to be aware and alert and do our due diligence to make sure, because we have sewer lines in this, in this city that have no bottom. They've rusted out, or collapsed, or cracked and broken, or they were orange brick piped, and there's no pipe left there anymore. It's just a hole in the, in the soil. So, uh, yes, we definitely need to get on this one. And probably we need to move B Street up. There is a lot of traffic on it. I drive it twice a week. So, and I've noticed it's just deteriorating over time. So, uh, yeah, this one we need.
Thank you, Sue. Would anyone else like to speak? No? Okay, we'll bring this back to the council. Further discussion? Motion?
I'll move the staff recommendation.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Oh, oh, oh.
The resolution is amended.
As amended. I'm sorry, I will, the staff recommendation and the, uh, resolution as amended. Are you good with the second?
I'm with the second, yes.
Okay.
Councilmember, Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye, thank you. We'll move to 12.4. Consider approving the purchase of two 2024 Ford Police Interceptor Utility Vehicles from Folsom Lake Ford in the amount of $108,502.38 for the Police Department authorizing the Chief of Police or designee to execute any documentation for said purchase and approve a $74,251 budget appropriation from the COPS SLESF Fund for said vehicles. You're not Chief Ren.
I'm not Chief Ren. He's spending tonight with a different city council, so I'm here in his place. He's down in series supporting one of his friends that just made chief different, sworn in, so. Thank you. I'm, I'm happy to be here. Um, so on June 27, 2023, the City Council adopted its 202324 General Fund Budget, which appropriated $219,973 to purchase and outfit two patrol vehicles, a pickup truck, and partially funded the School Resource Officer Jeep Wrangler. With the exception of one patrol vehicle, the other vehicles have been purchased, and we've taken delivery of them. Uh, the Police Department was, so over the last few years, vehicles have been very difficult to come by because of COVID and then the UAW strike. So a couple of years ago, we didn't get the opportunity to order because Ford closed the order bank before probably 90% of agencies got to order. Last year, it kept getting kicked because of the UAW strike. Orders have opened, but because of the strike, Ford originally said there was going to be no 2024 model years. So recently, uh, last week, I was in contact with, um, with our contact at Folsom Ford, and he said that Ford is going to give them an allotment of 2024 Fords that they built, and they're going to allocate each dealership some of these vehicles. So we have the opportunity now to buy some of these vehicles that we didn't think were ever going to be made. Um, I don't know exactly how many they have, but I, I know it's limited, and I know because we're local, um, we are getting the option to buy some of these before they're offered to, to other agencies. The other thing is, the order bank for 2025s is, is opening also this week. Those vehicles are going to be $3,800, $3,800 more expensive than the 2024s that, that we're going to have the availability to buy in March. So what I'm here today is I, I'm asking for funding for those vehicles. There's, there's a few different options there, and Dave has agreed to kind of go over the, the financial breakdown, because I think he would do a much better job than I would.
Thank you, Commander Muser. Um, so as Commander mentioned, uh, they've purchased all but one vehicle, um, and we have $95,224 for an additional vehicle. Uh, the vehicles that we're purchasing or recommending purchasing are $54,251 each. And so we don't have enough for two. However, we do have carryover in your Supplemental Law Enforcement Services Fund, which is a fund we currently use for one police officer position. We've had some good years. We carried over about $74,000, uh, in funding that we haven't spent yet, so we're, and it's perfectly appropriate. Matter of fact, in the past, before, we used it for a position. We used it just for equipment. So it's very appropriate to use this for an additional vehicle. So we're recommending tonight that you appropriate that $74,000 in carryover funding and, uh, recommend the purchase of two of the vehicles. Uh, one out of this year's, uh, regular operating budget, and another one's partially funded by the, uh, $74,000. There is an option, as the commander indicated, to purchase the third vehicle. The challenge is, we don't have enough funding to outfit all three vehicles. So you could purchase all three just outright and then outfit them, uh, with other funding. We'd have to figure that out. Um, one way to do that would be to, um, purchase the vehicles and How long would it take to get the vehicles?
We'd get them in March.
In March, but to outfit's about six months out. So you could, um, defer the, the funding for the outfitting uh, to next year's fiscal, fiscal year's budget. Um, but that, there's some uncertainty there, um, because we haven't developed that budget yet. So anyway, there's, that, that's the third option, if you're interested.
Thank you. Any questions?
Can I just add to that a little bit? So with the purchase of just the two vehicles, you would, or if you purchased all three vehicles, you would have approximately $7,000 left over, correct, Dave? I believe it's $6,900 or
That's correct.
and change, something like that. Approximately $7,000. That's all you would have towards the outfitting. So essentially, you would need, um,
$53,000 more to outfit them.
Correct, correct. Yeah, so, so that, that's what you'd have to look at, either in next year's budget or doing something from this year's if you wanted to take from reserves this year, which we don't recommend. But, um, the rest would need to come out of, uh, we could try and budget that in next year's, figure out how it would work. Yeah.
Thank you.
So with a next year's budget, would we be looking at trying to buy a vehicle anyway?
No. Not, not if we purchased three.
No, but if we only purchased two in next year's budget, would we be trying to
We purchased two, then in next year's budget, you would want to purchase one plus the outfitting of that, which 54 plus 20, well, that's about, almost close to 60 now, with the additional $3,800 plus 20. So you're, you're up around $80,000, just under $80,000 per vehicle outfitted.
Sounds like it's a decent swing, especially if we're getting a cheaper price on the vehicles now than next year.
Yes. Dave, that was the
About the timing and everything.
Because some of these These vehicles, literally, because of, you could park one of them, because you're not going to be I mean, if it's there, you might, but, you know, you're going to park it, because in terms of the schedule of us trying to keep up with buying vehicles, the one, the third one is not, that's actually for next year. So you could just park it and cover it up and say, hey. Actually, two of them are for next year. Yeah, two of them are for next year, so, so you have to bring one on just to keep pace. Then we'll have the two for next year.
Well, so if something happens to a current one, we could just outfit it with whatever was on the current one.
Presumably, you could pull
If that happens for, on some
I don't know. The commander is making faces over
That, that's pretty tough to do. A lot of the equipment has to be purchased new. We, we reuse what we can
Right.
radios, but the cages and a lot of things that are laser, laser measured to the interior change from year, model year to model year.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Nope.
No? Okay, we'll open this for public comment. Don't everybody run it once, please? Seeing Noah? Oh, Wesley? He moved. See what happens if you move in the audience, Ryan.
When you stay at the meeting all night, they'll start to just focus on you. It's great.
Just a quick question. I apologize for being unprepared, but, uh, so if you buy all three this year, do you not get to outfit any of the three? Or if you buy the two, you outfit the two and wait until next year? Just to get clarification on the outfitting. If you buy all three vehicles, do you get to outfit any of them this year?
Thank you, Ryan. Commander Muser?
Dave tells me we can outfit two this year.
If we purchase
But if we just purchase two, we can outfit two. If we purchase three, we're short about $13,000 to even do one outfit one.
We can find out. That's, that's
And, and real quick, if these cars went into the shop to be outfitted tomorrow, we would not get the cars or the invoices until the next fiscal year. It's, it's a very long process.
Right, okay.
Any other questions, conversation, motions?
I'll move the staff recommendation. That we buy three cars?
I'll second.
All right.
Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye, thank you. We'll move on to 12.5. Consider authorizing staff to release
a request for proposals for consulting services for the Public Safety Building Environmental Clearance and Conceptual Design Project. Ms. McConnell?
Thank you again, Mayor No. Uh, as you mentioned, the item before you this evening will authorize staff to release a request for proposals for consulting services for the Public Safety Building Environmental Clearance and Conceptual Design Project. On April 7th, 2021, the Public Safety Team consisting of the Placerville Police Department On April 7, 2021, the Public Safety Team consisting of the Placerville Police Department and El Dorado County Fire Protection District received joint approval from their elected officials to develop a needs assessment to consider the existing facility needs, future facility needs, as well as the broader discussion of the unmet and crucial needs of each facility. A contract to Dubery Architects was awarded at that meeting for the Public Safety Building Needs Assessment. The report was developed and found that options to renovate or expand either facility fail to meet the current and future staffing needs, code requirements, equipment sizing, storage, and basic operational needs of both police and fire. A joint public safety building would offer a multitude of operational, functional, and community benefits by efficiently using space that serves both police and fire. It would also enhance community services and control construction costs through value engineering design. At a joint city council fire protection district special meeting held on November 29, 2022, the final needs assessment report was received, filed, and staff was directed to continue the pursuit of funding opportunities. Staff was also directed to initiate project delivery, including environmental clearance, right-of-way, and design for a combined police and fire public safety facility at a new site. Subsequently, the Public Safety Building Environmental Clearance and Conceptual Design Project was developed as part of the 2022-2023 capital improvement program budget, and staff began to plan for the next project steps. The needs assessment report provided a conceptual review of possible sites for the new facility and identified a vacant 48.3-acre parcel between Placerville Drive and Ray Lawyer Drive as the most feasible location. Staff has determined that it is necessary to procure consulting services for an engineering team to take the necessary steps towards purchasing the land for the public safety facility. The consulting services will include further development of the site evaluation to ensure that the final site recommended for purchase is viable for the development. The consultant's scope of work will include environmental analysis, conceptual design, and right-of-way engineering and real estate services. The process from start to finish will involve many actions from planning commission, city council, to address many zoning... or to address any zoning changes for the proposed site, and joint city council and fire district approval will be needed to purchase the land. Staff is recommending authorization that will allow the release of a request for proposals for consulting services to begin the project. That concludes my verbal report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions from the council? No questions? Okay, we'll open this to public comment. No public comment. We will bring this back to the council for discussion and a motion. Anyone?
I'll move the item.
I'll second.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Thank you. Move to 12.6. Consider authorizing the Director of Community Services to negotiate and execute a consulting services agreement with CSI Consulting Group in the amount of $21,978 for Park Impact Fee Nexus Study, Quimby Land Dedication, and in lieu fee study and related consulting services, and approve a $25,000 budget appropriation from the Parks Development Fund for said project. Mr. Zeller?
Thank you, Mayor No and council. Tonight, we have this request for an agreement in front of you, and the purpose of this council action is to revisit and establish a new impact fee for new residential development within the city. Impact fees are normally based on costs established by study of the nexus between the overall cost of those facilities in relation to the population of the area that they're being served. This study is... will determine both a park impact fee, which is the cost for new parks per residential unit, and a Quimby land dedication and in lieu fee, which will establish a parkland dedication requirement and fees in lieu of land dedication. So the current park and rec master plan was established in 2009, was updated in 2017. And CSI Consulting Group had visited us before and completed a comprehensive parks and facilities master plan and park impact fee nexus study in 2017. However, the associated park impact fee was never increased, and it still remains the $1,320 per detached single-family development unit that was established in 2008. The study that was done in 2017, which attempted to increase the impact fees and establish a cost for the specific land use categories, determined that there should be a cost per capita of around $3,371. And they also provide a matrix of housing types, and based on the per capita cost, those are in your staff report, and they go everywhere from the single occupancy accessory dwelling unit at 3,371 to a single-family detached housing, which topped at $8,562. In reviewing the minutes from the 2017 study and the council discussion, it appears these fees were deemed too costly for new residential development, and the study was tabled to be brought back with a downwardly adjusted fee schedule. But there is not a record of this action that was taken, and the current impact fee does remain at $1,320 per single-family residence. So in order to impose these fees, the Nexus Study will demonstrate that there is a reasonable relationship between new development that occurs and the need for additional developed parkland and rec facilities as a result of the new development. So just to be clear, these impact fees would not be going to fix or repair existing infrastructure for parkland or recreational facilities, but this would be new facilities or improved facilities that would follow with the increased need for use. So the consultants will develop and execute a model based upon our current city data and cost for park development in order to determine the appropriate fees to cover these costs. The consultant chosen to do this study, like I said, was the same consultant that did the 2017 study, and so staff will get the advantage of their previous work and process as we execute this new contract. The draft study will be brought to the Rec and Park Commission, the Planning Commission, and finally back to the council for their review, and the consultant will be present in person for these public meetings. So the options that you have before you are to approve this resolution, will allow me to move forward with this agreement, reject the resolution, and provide other direction. So the cost altogether, the base cost is $19,980. That includes the in-person public meetings that were mentioned, and I'm looking at getting an approval to get a 10% contingency on top of this, in case there is any additional work or meetings or other crucial things that need to happen that may occur outside the scope. And so the total I'm requesting is $21,978. And part of this approval tonight that the council can consider is to approve a $25,000 budget appropriation from the Park Development Fund for the funding of this set of studies. And I can take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, we'll open this for public comment.
Sue Rodman, Placerville. Is this a state requirement? Is the main question that I have. If not, I would question why we would want to do this. We haven't taken as good a care of our parks that we already have as we should. And I don't see that we would be able to develop any new parks. Do we have sites identified for these new parks? We have a shortage of affordable housing in this community as it is, and adding another $8,000 in fees for anybody to build anything doesn't seem like a rational thing to do unless, A, it's state requirement, and B, we have already determined what sites would be developed for parks, and C, since we aren't taking good care of our existing parks, why would we want to develop more parks that we don't take care of?
Thank you, Sue. Anyone else? Nope, we'll bring it back to council. I'll take a stab at answering one of those questions. We have a lot of land out at Goldbug Park, and there is room to develop that, and seeing as most of the development that may come in would be on the north side, it would help serve those communities over there, so it opens the opportunity for, I don't know, pickleball courts over at Goldbug Park. So we're not looking at purchasing more land, but it would also enable us to bring the amenities to the parks we have. As far as a state requirement?
I can answer that.
Thank you, Mona.
Yes, this is... So this, to the extent that the city requires residential development projects to offset their impact to recreation and park facilities, the state has stated that the Quimby Act is the exclusive means of exacting those kind of fees. The Quimby Act makes determinations of how much we can require, and they're based on population, per thousand, so that's part of the study, is to determine that, and it's usually an in lieu fee or a dedication. The second component of that is, once such a fee is adopted, we are required every five years to update those, to demonstrate that whatever funds that we have collected, we still have a use for those, and there's a plan, right? Quimby Act fees, park fees, may be used for a variety of uses. It's not just limited to purchasing parks' land. It's also for their improvement, for community facilities, for trails, for open space, for recreation. The caveat is that it must be used also to benefit the residential development for which we collected the fees from.
Thank you, Mona. Questions, discussion from council?
We had a nice... In our agenda review meeting, we had a nice discussion about this, and one of the things that I personally don't think that the park fee is what's keeping affordable housing out of town. I don't think that's the thing. But I think sometimes we look at these numbers, and we do them... They're isolated, so we have a list, and it says, well, ours is this much, and somewhere other town is this much, and the county is this much, and another town is this much, and they, you know, in ascending order. And you're thinking, well, jeez, you know, that's crazy. Why is ours so low, these others are so high? And they certainly sell houses in El Dorado Hills, and I think there's a, what, $16,000 or $13,000, but some number. So it's obviously not a barrier to selling people homes. Now, whether they're affordable or not is another issue. I would like to see the analysis show, not in a huge amount of detail, but what the fees are to build anything in those other communities, because I think if there's some context to it, it won't just be this number that sits out there, and then everybody just attacks the number and its relationship to these other park fees. I mean, that's an important piece of information. But my guess is that the fees to build a 2,000-square-foot house in El Dorado Hills is significantly more than they are here in town. Maybe they're not, maybe our fees are higher. I have no idea. I should know the answer to that question, but I don't. And so maybe we can have the consultant just dig into that and say, yeah, you're going to have a building, you know, to pick a square footage, 1,600 square feet, whatever number. This is what the bedroom taxes are, this is what the water hookup is, this is what the sewer hookup is, this is what... Bang, dabang, because everybody's taken a piece of these building permits. I mean, we're not the only people that are doing that. And at least then it would provide us with some context of whatever decision we make, it's based on all of the building costs in all these other towns. At least that's my humble opinion, that we should ask our consultant to do that.
Other thoughts?
No, I would just say, I'm all for it. Will it cover that, though? I mean, this current, under this amount that we're allocating to do that?
Mr. Zeller, do you have an idea about that?
Can you clarify what that question was?
I think what he's looking for is the context... Okay.
Yeah, I think that working with a consultant, either we can gather that information, or it's not... We can get it, one way or the other. So, yeah.
Okay. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to move the resolution.
I'll second.
Okay, we have roll call, please.
Councilmember Gottberg?
Aye.
Told you.
Councilmember Saragosa?
Aye.
Councilmember Yarborough?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Clarici?
Aye.
Mayor No?
Aye. Great. We will move on to council reports from other agencies. We'll start with El Dorado County Transit Authority, and that one is mine. We adopted a mid-year operating budget adjustment, transferred ownership of the Ray Lawyer Park and Ride over to transit. We received and filed the El Dorado Transit Park and Ride Master Plan and approved the My Ride Mileage Reimbursement Program. Next is El Dorado County Transportation Commission.
Yes, we did a couple of things. One of them was, I was deposed, and I'm no longer the chair, it was rightful. Wendy Thomas is now the chair, and our mayor is now the vice chair, so that was very exciting. And I'll just highlight some things. There were some... We approved a draft OWP, that's the overall work program. It's the Transportation Commission's just plan of operation for the next fiscal year. More agencies should make one, because it's a really nice, handy tool. So there's a draft of that, and it gets finalized either in May and June in that timeframe. But if you ever want to know what the Transportation Commission does, grab the OWP. 99% of it will be in there. It's really cool. We also had a public hearing for TDA for transit needs. There used to be this thing called Unmet Transit Needs. It still exists, but almost no agency does them anymore for real weird reasons. And so they opened up a thing, and they asked if anybody has new input. This is part of their outreach. They'll also deal with their Social Services Transportation Advisory Committee, and then they go out and do other outreach. But, you know, if you have ideas for transit services, you talk to them, and this is part of that process. And then the only other thing that I thought was kind of... There was a bunch of things, but the only thing that I thought was kind of interesting was the freeway... We got a report on the Freeway Service Patrol for 2023, and it is amazing how much work those people that are going up and down the freeways, accidents, you know, people that run out of gas, you know, all that stuff, the work they do is remarkable. And so I thought I would highlight that as one of the things that we talked about. Anything else?
Not super significant. The US 50 Camino signage is moving forward.
Oh, yeah, but that's in Camino.
Yeah, you're right. Okay. LAFCO?
Yes, LAFCO. I have the agenda here.
I think Councilmember Gottberg is the lead on that.
No.
Oh, no?
No.
They made it be Clarici because they hadn't meant to do their... Yes.
Oh.
They forced me off the dais.
I know. I was more than...
Wow, there's a lot of drama.
I was more than happy to let Nicole just have at the LAFCO, but they stopped.
Yes.
We appointed a chair and a vice chair. I was the vice chair, but there is no... Well, hey, I'm not going to be up there anymore, and I don't think they would have wanted me. The chair is now... Oh, they continued with Brian Veerkamp.
Yes.
Because there's inertia. And then the gal from South Lake Tahoe is now...
Tamara Wallace.
Thank you for remembering her name. And then they talked about... They went over their financial statements for 2022-23. It's part of their fiscal year audits. Everything added up in the lower right-hand column. It was rather unremarkable, and that was pretty much it. There were some things about legislation.
Yeah, there's a little bit of discussion of the Meeks Bay.
Oh, yeah, the Meeks Bay Fire Department, they did some stuff up there. They basically handed the Meeks Bay Fire Department all the TOT tax they had in the bank, for that part of the world, which is not a small amount of money. And then they did something with their allocations out of the taxes, which I didn't even think you could do. But they were very clear that this was like a one-off kind of thing. And then they're trying to do something where Meeks Bay and the fire district above them are going to merge, maybe. That's kind of in the ether. It all sounded very weird to me.
It sounded like something that couldn't happen in a lot of other places. Do you want to add to anything?
No, I have nothing to add to that.
So you weren't being allowed to be seated because we didn't get our...
Because our meeting was on Tuesday, and their meeting were on Wednesday, and so it wasn't part of the agenda.
For LAFCO, we have to have a special meeting to do the appointment, so our meeting was two days after their LAFCO meeting.
My God.
Oh, they were very...
So now they're official.
They were very serious.
So in the next meeting, I will be allowed to sit at the dais.
Yeah, and I will be allowed to participate by Zoom.
Okay, Secog?
We meet on Thursday.
Okay, Pioneer?
We meet on Thursday.
Placerville Fire Safe Council? We talked all about the event, exactly, March 23. Opportunity Knox?
Yeah, we met, we did our appointment.
Yeah, we met, we did our appointments to the chair and vice chair. We do have, I'm going to blank on the name right now, but one of the folks from El Dorado County is now on that. One of the staff is now the county member, so that's good, I think. I think that's an improvement for us. And then, yes, let's see, what else? We approved some HAP grant funding application stuff. I think that's the primary stuff we did.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, we'll take public comment on council reports. Any public comment? No public comment. Bringing it back. Number 14, requests for future agenda items. Does anyone have anything? I do. I would like us to revisit the Sierra Harm Reduction Coalition. If you'll remember, the county and the city and the state had a meeting and a discussion about it, and the state decided to approve use only in the city of Placerville and not in El Dorado County. El Dorado County had a special ordinance that they adopted, which apparently the state took to heart, and I would like for us to revisit that conversation and see how this affects us and if we would like to do the same.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
Yes, I love it.
I'm a no on it, but that's just to be consistent.
It's okay to change your mind, too.
I'm okay with that.
Okay, so it looks like we have four yes, so we can move that forward. Take, do you have any public comment on agenda, future agenda items? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to city manager and staff reports. 15.1, receive and file January Fire Station 25 Run Report. Chief Cordera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council, and it is good to hear the conversation piece about LAFCO with the annexation. We hope to be having some conversations with you over the next few months. You'll see within the report on Station 25, the crews are really busy during the month of January. The engine averaged just over 10 calls a day. The medic unit was up at about 11 and a half calls a day. In conjunction with that, since the beginning of the year, we've had three of the OES prepositions where the state has funded the additional upstaffing of additional engines. The last storm system, they actually funded seven additional engine companies and four chief officers. The crews were really busy. We didn't end up with the swift water issues that we thought we might have, but the winds produced a lot of downlines, trees into homes, unfortunately, and things of that nature, so crews have been very busy. You'll notice on the front, the EMSA has been recognizing various members in our agency for field saves. It's kind of something they've taken on, so this is just a portion of the photos of the folks that we have within our agency that were recognized for field saves over the last few months. But again, the crews have been really busy, but they're hanging in there and making the best of things, so with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thanks for all your hard work. Appreciate that. Questions, comments? Okay, we'll move to 15.2, Development Services Department Development Permitting Statistics for the month of January 2024. Mr. Rivas?
Thank you, Mayor, council. Nothing in particular to highlight in, in this list of statistics other than a little bit of a downtrend. If you look on the last page there, you can see the permit issued and final. It's a little bit of a downtrend. Hopefully, it will turn around. The only thing I do want to highlight in this particular report is where now we've changed with this report, it'll be done on a fiscal year as opposed to a calendar year.
Okay.
I think it's, it was very beneficial for staff to see the trends that coincide with the fiscal year and our budgeting process, and so I.
Great.
That's really the only major change here as far as the report itself.
Great. Thank you. Are there any city manager reports?
I just wanted to hopefully make sure and remind you that on our budget calendar, we have scheduled a strategic plan review meeting for the 22nd of February, which is next, a week from Thursday, a week from Thursday. I have it scheduled at 5:00. We're open to whatever time you would like to do. Just what we'll do on that this year is, I don't know if you remember, last year we did recommend some changes. We went through some things. We never did actually bring those changes back to you, so we'll bring those back and see if there's any more, and then just kind of finalize the plan. But this is kind of an opportunity to look at the strategic plan or the changes you want to make, any further changes, kind of give us some direction on what you want us to focus on in the, in the budget, and an opportunity to talk about things you would like to see us put in the budget if there's new things you'd like to see also. So that's the plan, is to hold that meeting next Thursday, the 22nd. I have it scheduled at 5:00, 5 to 7, basically. That works for you.
That's good for me. John wants to know if there's food.
For you, John, always.
Yeah, Nicole? Okay. Okay, okay. Looks good.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll take public comment on item 15. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. 16 is upcoming items. I will let the audience read them for themselves. And 17 brings us to adjournment at 8:25.